It is.
All right, well, hi, everyone. I'll hereby call this meeting of the Rappahannock County Planning Commission to order. I believe our first.
Pleasure, allegiance. Do you have an agenda?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Donahue, why don't you go ahead and call the board to order just.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Board of Supervisors' special call meeting to order.
And just so for clarity, Ms. Smith is participating as a member of the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission from home for medical reasons electronically, right?
That's correct. Thank you, Gary.
Mr. Currie, would you be handling this?
Happy to, yes. Right. So you have, and Ms. Summers is also joining us electronically, so she can mute out all of her coffee. Your first item on the Planning Commission agenda is the organizational components that you handle every January. If you look in that agenda item, you'll see a standard meeting schedule, which follows the same schedule as you typically do, noting in June that the regular meeting would be held on Monday, the 17th, rather than Wednesday, the 19th, Wednesday, the 19th being a state holiday, and then also showing the January meeting, which will be your next organizational meeting. And in addition, attached to that agenda item, after you go through your elections, there's a very short resolution, which enables the Chair and Vice Chair to postpone a meeting essentially if there's inclement weather. This is enabled by the Code of Virginia, section 1522214. So it's important to have that in place ahead of time in case that comes up, which hopefully it never will. With that out of the way, your rules of procedure set forth that you will elect a Chairperson, a Vice Chairperson, and a FOIA officer. I've served as the body's FOIA officer in the past, and I'm willing to do that in going into the future. So with with that out of the way, I guess I will open the floor to nominations for the Planning Commission Chair, nominations from Planning Commissioners.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Christine Smith, please.
And I assume, Marlene, you're getting all those, right?
Yes, I was told if I did not get a name, please say if I would not welcome them.
So I have a nomination for Ms. Smith. Are there any other nominations for Chair? And I imagine, Ms. Smith, you're willing, hearing no other nominations. It sounds like Ms. Smith is your Chair. Congratulations, Ms. Smith. There are nominations for Vice Chair from the Planning Commissioners.
I nominate Gary Light.
Are there any other nominations? Everybody looking away as if. Hearing the over nominations, Mr. Light, you are the Vice Chair. And now I guess I'll take a nomination for your FOIA officer. Happy to accept that nomination. Any other nominations? Hearing done, I will serve as your FOIA officer. So congratulations. You have your 2024 slate of officers. If you could. If you could consider adopting the organizational meeting resolution provided in the packet, enabling the Chairperson or Vice Chairperson in the absence of the Chairperson to postpone a meeting in event of inclement weather, that would be wonderful. Get a motion.
I move that we pass the resolution as presented.
And a second. Ms. Ritter, Mr. Light, and Ms. Ritter, and we'll just take a quick roll call. Mr. Light?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Mr. Sisk?
Aye.
Mr. Shuland?
Aye.
Ms. Ritter?
Aye.
And Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Thank you. That's done. And just so there is no confusion. Let's go ahead and accept a motion to adopt your 2024 meeting schedule as being the third Wednesday of the month at 7:00 PM in the courthouse here at 250 Gay Street, Washington, with the exception of June, which that meeting would be on Monday, June 17. It's over. Thank you, Mr. Light. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Ms. Ritter, all in favor? You have a schedule. Thank you. All right. Moving right along, we have the remainder of your agenda. So if the Planning Commission could adopt your agenda. The motion, anybody? Fantastic. Second?
I'll second.
Wonderful. A motion from Mr. Light, seconded by Mr. Atkins. All in favor? Wonderful. Ms. Donahue, maybe get your agenda adopted in full.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, from the board?
From the board.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Are you, none of those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And just to be clear, Ms. Smith, did you approve both of those agendas?
Yes, thank you, Gary.
Thank you. All right. I think that brings us to public comment period on the Planning Commission agenda. Oh, minutes, sorry. Terrible. There are minutes November 15th provided. Is there any suggested corrections to the minutes?
There is the one for the name. Has that been changed? I think it was Karen Hunt versus Karen Hunt.
Let's suggest a motion to adopt as amended to correct the name.
I too move.
Ms. Ritter?
I'll second.
Mr. Light, all in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. You have adopted minutes. Now we'll have public comment. Thank you. Anybody who wants to speak before both bodies, you're welcome to approach the microphone and share your input on anything, including those items on the agenda.
Hi, everybody. My name is Justin Locke. I'd just like to put a comment before you all about the upcoming changes to the vacation rental ordinance that has been proposed. Reading the draft proposal, I feel like it falls quite short of really the fundamental paradigms laid out in the comprehensive plan for Rappahannock County, one of the plan that speaks about preserving our rural character, absolutely, and also about sustainability, and also about environmental stewardship. I feel like the new ordinance lacks in those matters, and I would love for the board to revise that ordinance and really try and align it very closely with the comprehensive plan for which we, the taxpayer, have paid tremendous time and money for you all to create and really stands as the document that captures the community as it is and how we want it to be, and we expect all of our policies that you all create for us to align with that comprehensive plan very, very stringently. Thank you.
Excuse me. Mary Catherine Ishipimott. I just wanted to put out a question. I understand, from looking at the board's agenda for tonight, it looks a little different than the Planning Commission's. On the board agenda, it says that there will be a public hearing scheduled for February 21st for the potential changes to the 147-38, 170-38A, whatever it is, six, pertaining to right-of-way on secondary roads. I note that the BZA has an appeal pending before it, and there's going to be a hearing on the 28th of February on that. So I'm assuming, because the Planning Commission doesn't have a hearing scheduled on their agenda for the 21st of February, maybe that's a typo of some sort, I would assume and hope that both bodies would allow the BZA to run its course on its on its appeal there before they undertake to take any other changes to that. Thank you.
Let me provide some clarification, and it's probably confusion on part of staff when that was put together. That agenda item was combined. There was that issue as well as the discrepancy on the family subdivision, and so the intent is that there be a public hearing on the family subdivision matter at the next Planning Commission meeting, as well as the tourist home item at the next meeting, but not the other matter.
Sorry. Other matter being?
The right-of-way with relative to subdivision. Anybody else interested in public comment? All right.
It's appropriate that I close the public comment.
That brings you to the heart of your agenda items. The first is really touching on a matter that you've already discussed multiple times, and it was just refreshed here to make it clear. This is regarding the tourist home. You heard from one citizen about this. Of course, the Planning Commission and Board could modify more of this section in the future if you would like. You discussed that at a recent meeting and thought at this point you would just make this one change and then perhaps change other things at some other time. I did upload earlier today an updated copy of this ordinance that would be considered by the Board of Supervisors. The earlier version that was provided at your last meeting had a slightly different preamble that thought that there might be a joint public hearing. These are separate public hearings, and so the green places will identify the vote of the Planning Commission and your recommendation, which are not yet formed yet. And then within the body of this, you remember, the only change was to paragraph, inserting paragraph nine. The zoning administrator shall not accept a special exception application for tourist homes unless the applicant owner has owned the subject parcel for a period of not less than two years. When you looked at it before, that included both tourist home and bed and breakfast, because that's what the entire section is about, and the bodies decided this was only appropriate for tourist homes. So this is the form of the document that would be considered by the Board of Supervisors and placed for public hearing notice in the papers before your February 21 meeting, and then the Board of Supervisors' March 4th or 5th meeting, whichever is the right date. If there's any other discussion on this item, we can do that now, but I think you've been through a fair amount.
Discussion. Can I just establish, Ms. Smith, would you like to delegate the running of this meeting to me, given that your online presence, and I can stop being?
Oh, sure. I'm so sorry. This is awkward. I had intended to convey that.
No problem.
Before the meeting, but yeah, if you could, if you could run the meeting, Gary, it's a little tough to do personally, and would be much appreciated. Thank you.
I understand. Thank you. Can you squeeze into the microphone and come to the other? So I guess for the Commissioners, I reviewed the language. I know there was some discussion about some less common situations where an existing B in, or tourist home changes hands. I believe this language as drafted does reflect the conclusion of our last recommendation, but I would certainly entertain a motion or a conversation.
And at this point, no action is needed by the bodies after your last meeting was set forward to go to public hearing with this wording, but that's going to happen at your February meeting, just to get everything timed out with the right notices in the paper and everything.
So there is no action. We don't?
We don't need any action unless somebody wants to change the course.
Well, the only question I have was if you have, let's, if the owner owns the property for two years and then makes it into a tourist home, then that owner sells the property, new owner comes in, new owner has to own for two years, right?
That owner would have to own for two years and then apply, if the ordinance is still worded this way at that time. This provision of the ordinance could change over those two years. Other provisions could change relative to the type of road that's needed, or the size of parcel that's needed, or any other number of things, and that would, this would allow the Planning Commission and the Board to tweak those rules as you move forward, rather than locking in this use forever and always under these rules.
One point of clarification on that. I believe that would only be true if, at the time of the issuance of the existing permit, it was set to expire upon transfer.
You are correct. If there was a condition that said, stated that.
Can we, can we consider any additional restrictions added to this? And I know, I think I understood you in the beginning, is we're only dealing with the two-year at the present time.
Yeah, so the bodies have discussed this a few times, and you could add any number of things if you could come to some concrete language that you want advertised for your public hearing in February. However, if you, if every meeting we massage things just a little bit and put off the decision on what we're actually going to have a public hearing for at the next meeting, then you might never get there. So one approach would be to get this taken care of, locked away and done, and then resolve, when you move on to maybe Phase Two of the Berkeley Group work, where you're getting to talking about who's allowed to do what uses, where, with what regulations. Maybe this is one of the topics you want to look at, at best practices for short-term rentals.
I, I will agree to that, because, but later down, I do think we need to add more restrictions to the tourist home situation. But I concur that we need to go ahead with what we got and get that going, because we need to get this in place as soon as possible, because you have a situation in Spurryville right now that is not a good situation. You have a, you have a highly investigative, I mean, investor comes into Spurryville, buys property on the corner of 522, and across from the Estes property. First thing he does, he comes in, he tears down the old post office building, which should have been, but I guess was not a historical building. The next thing he done is tore down the iconic Spurryville Sandwich Shop, and I guess that doesn't mean anything to people that wasn't here during that time. But back in the 1950s and 60s, that was a gathering place for the people of Spurryville and the community, but it just got wiped out.
Yeah, that's a little bit different situation, because in that zoning district, tourist homes are allowed by right. They would not come to the Planning Commission or Board of Supervisors, and that's a change that the bodies could choose to make at some point in time to change whether, rather they be allowed by right with a P in that use table and change it to a SE for special exception, or maybe state that some restrictions in the regulations would preclude certain situations. Now, Ms. Smith has her hand up, but I'm sure she can chime in anytime she wants.
I didn't want to interrupt anybody, but Gary, could you remind me what other localities have this on the books? I, it seems, while I certainly agree with the spirit of this, and, you know, we've discussed this before, I'm not sure this is the best way to accomplish what we're trying to do, and of course, I, I favor either a basin or onsite management or, or owner-on-site approach, so that it isn't true residence, because I know one of the reasons listed for this two-year wait is that it will seemingly deter investors, but two years is not a long time. And I just, I wanted to refresh around other localities that are using this approach, please.
We, I am not aware of other localities that are using this approach, and there may be many people in the community who think that this is not a good idea. The way you go about figuring that out is having a public hearing. So you're, the Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission, Planning Commission's not required to make a recommendation, affirmative recommendation for this, and the Board is certainly not required to adopt it after hearing what the public has to think about.
I wonder if we should get a legal opinion on this before we adopt it.
Mr. Goff has already reviewed it and states he believes it's legal.
Okay, even though nowhere else is doing it.
I think other people, other counties in the state are doing it. I've heard of other states doing this, in particular, some municipalities have done it. You know, we ought to, we ought to pause for a minute, you know. I think we're doing a little, I'm completely fine with whatever we do, but I'd like to look at this from a little bit higher elevation. You know, I think we're doing a little bit of knee-jerk, but that's okay. You know, we're coming out of this pandemic where everybody flocked out of cities and wanted to be out here, and we saw unprecedented people come out here and rent things at different locations for extended period of times and pay great rents for it. We got a comprehensive plan that encourages agrotourism. We got four restaurants in this county that are very unique. You can't go in there and get a meal for less than a hundred bucks, and some of them are a lot more than a hundred bucks, and it's not the local people eating there. It's people coming here. The agrotourism has been successful. We want to tax these people to get their revenue, and it's working. So now, because these things are working, we're doing this, this reaction to it. And, you know, if you're coming out here for a weekend and you're going to go to these restaurants and buy $200 bottles of wine and spend $200 on a meal, you know, you'd rather not drive back into Northern Virginia. So you rent someplace, and you have a good time, and then you tell somebody else about it, you know. And, you know, whether two years is going to make a difference, probably not. I think some of these people that have bought these things, if you talk to them, you know, they were kind of on the borderline. They read about this, and it was the end thing to do. So they said, well, this will make it more comfortable to us to do it. But what I'm hearing now from some localities, particularly back at Bryce Mountain, where there was a flood of being, of Airbnbs done, you know, it's not working anymore, and they're vacant, and they're moving from short-term rentals back into long-term rentals. So it's a cycle we're going through. So, you know, this two-year thing, it's okay, but, you know, if you have the ability, it's not going to create any more housing for local people. If you look at the deeds in the paper, it's not local people buying $400,000 houses. It's people from outside the area. That's 80, 90% or more of the traffic flow into the county. So that's going to continue. And this is a feel-good thing for us. If you want to do something that really makes a difference, call it five years. Five years might make a difference, but two years is not, because you can outweigh two years pretty easy. But do we even need two years? You know, it's been successful. We've seen our revenue go up. So it's, it's, sometimes you get what you want, but then, you know, you want something else. So, you know.
Well, I can say from my perspective that I would definitely not call it reactive. The, the idea that, that caused me to think about it was more about what we did in 1986, which is we have artificially low density, and that is true. All you have to do is cross the county line, and you can see there's a lot more houses. And I have had nothing but people tell me that in our community that they feel as though, you know, striking that balance is critical. And so I agree with you in the sense that five years might actually be a better idea, and we talked about that time period last time. I would definitely be in favor of a longer time period. I think that we need to, for instance, Bryce has a very different economy than we do, and so that's a really big discussion about what we're doing with land that's zoned agriculture, and we're turning it into a commercial use that's quasi-agriculture, but for Airbnbs, it's not. It's not agrotourism. It could support agrotourism when it starts to look like it, if you've got farmettes and you've got people coming in, and this, this happens all over Europe. I've been to them. But I think that my thinking about this was that if there's something that we can do that would put a tiny chilling effect on people buying and reselling houses, or an investor group that would buy up 10 to 15 contiguous lots, or not even contiguous, and then try to Airbnb them or get permits all at once, which could absolutely happen. It's like Blackberry Farm down in Tennessee, where they have just sprawling campuses all over the place. We would be in a position then to be saying to a group, yes or no, for multiple properties. I'm not saying it's going to happen. It's not scaremongering. I'm just thinking outside the box. When I have been thinking about it and saying, well, what could we do? Because it would definitely cause somebody to rethink whether they're going to buy a property if they can't. You know how many phone calls I've gotten as a supervisor with people asking me, hey, I saw this thing on Zillow. Can I Airbnb it? I'm like, call the building department. Don't, you know, and that's not my role here. So I just want to say for the record, for me, it's not reactive. What I'm trying to do is be, I'm trying to be proactive, and I'm trying to get ahead of this thing, because you hear constantly, and, you know, throughout the country, people are dealing with this issue. We have kept our housing in Rappahannock artificially low. That is our decision.
So you're saying two different things, though. In one breath, you're talking housing. In the other breath, you're talking agricultural, agrotourism. I see it more as a housing component. You know, we have a housing issue here in the county. If, if you and a spouse or an individual, whatever, are making $40,000 to $70,000, you have a housing problem in Rappahannock. You try to find something, $1,200, $1,800 in this county is very, very difficult. So the county has done nothing to address that problem. Nothing ever, ever has the county done anything to address that problem. We have a housing problem. We've stated it kind of in the comprehensive plans, but it's never been addressed. We had an organization come to Spurryville, the old employer up there. The exact comments from people was, we don't want that kind of people in Rappahannock County. Those are the exact comments. So, you know, if, if, it's hard to do something about housing when you don't have anything that allows housing to be done. Yes, we do have some zoning in the county, but it's very difficult to use, or the best of it's been used up, and nothing's being done. You know, there's grants, there's plenty of things you can do with your zoning to create housing, but we choose not to do it, for whatever reason. And the end result of that, we don't have housing for young people. Our school population's going down, and I believe that when we did this agreement with Little Washington, we limited the number of housing that they can do in the future with any amendment. So whatever we do, we're trying to limit housing, even if it's potentially affordable housing. So, you know, we have to decide what we want to be. You know, I mean, do we want to be all-inclusive and provide an environment here for everybody to live in, or just people over 55 that can afford to come here and buy a $750 million house or above? So.
Yeah, so we talked about that last time. I think that we all agreed that this is really applying to houses that fit between that, at the very bottom, 375, 400, all the way up to 3 million. The question's not about affordable housing, as I addressed last time. The question is really about people living here, and I'm not going to say that, it doesn't matter how much the house is, $750,000, if that person's going to live there, great. It's really about that. It's about turning agricultural land into a commercial use. I mean, that's what we're doing. We have right-of-ways. We've got people on shared right-of-ways that are complaining about it. I get, I get so many people talking to me about it. So we're not spot zoning, but we kind of are in a way by doing this constantly. We just got that list, and it's 78 that are active, and that's a lot. We're not killing this. I just think we should chill it out.
Well, I have no problem chilling it out, too.
Yeah, that's.
But for every action, you've got an opposite action, reaction.
I agree. It's balancing.
You got to know what the other action is that's going on.
Yeah, and let me just say for the record, I value these tourist homes. They generate good money for our county, and we need to be diversifying our revenue stream. We cannot just rely on real estate, property taxes constantly. We have to do other things. I really believe that. And so I think it is a balancing act. That's why I don't want to kill them. I just don't. It just, it kind of crushes me a little bit when I see these $400,000 houses getting bought up and then turned into for Airbnbs. I know it doesn't happen that often, and I know that they're more like 685, but still, I see it a lot, and I just, I know it's a bigger conversation, but that's, I, I just, I want to be proactive about this, and, you know, folks do have a little bit of an issue. I mean, you know, Brian, you've got a, an Airbnb right next to you that's, causes you some tension. And, you know, these are good and bad things, and I just think that that's why I wanted to have this discussion. That's why I thought two years would make someone really think about what it is they want to do.
What about as a stipulation for Airbnb? You have to live in the place six months, and then you can rent it for six months. You have to live in the place six months and then you can rent it for six months.
Yeah, Ms. Smith brought that up and I'm all about it. I'd totally support that. I don't know how we enforce it or. Yeah, I think it'd be difficult.
Well, but same line. I've been moving farm to be a full time resident in the county. And why not, well, they have to be a resident focus of the county.
Well, my answer to that is about twenty percent of our housing stock are second homes. And I don't see how you can take away the right of somebody who owns a second home to rent it out to somebody. And you know, if we're going down that path, that's a whole different ballgame.
Well, you're not taking away, you're just limiting how much they can do. Instead of instead of buying the house and and renting it every weekend to different people, you can rent six months.
Well, I think we all would agree. These investors that come in, that need to be invested in the county before they start reaping the benefits of their of their investment. You know, bottom line, the greed of money and the love of money is the good ballgame.
I think we're, well, I I think we're ranging quite a lot here. We have one action on the table, which is something that we've discussed at some length. It's not by any stretch, everything we're ever going to do about tourist homes or bed and breakfast. But it is a bit of a governor. It is a bit of a delay. It is a bit of a check against the thoughtless, quick buy it and turn it into an Airbnb. So you know, I I know we don't need an action on this, but I feel like we could. This conversation really has no natural end. I do think we're going to get to this, as Mr. Curry suggested, is when we go through the review. And I guess I'd like to suggest that, you know, someone has any health study, but fine. But I'd like to, I think we're in agreement that we want to go ahead with this hearing and you know, presume, chances are, no. We're going to have the hearing and we're going to have this whole conversation again in response to the hearings.
Yes, we do it.
Let's move on then.
As it's currently written, though, it says parcel and not residence or building or anything like that. So for new construction, just merely owning the parcel for two years and start building and get your application in? And that makes some metric criteria for?
Yeah, and it was purposely written as parcel rather than structure. You don't have to build, you have to buy the parcel, own the parcel for two years and you can build a house. Or or I guess, if you build a tourist home as your primary initiative, your other regulations in the section say you have to build it so it looks like a house if it's in typical zoning district. So so yeah. Someone could come along, buy vacant property, hold it for two years and then apply. It's still subjective, still has to meet the other tests of the road and various things.
You know, one one last little tidbit here. You know, we're, we we have a very kind of, even though we we put little restrictions on a lot of things. Our zone is 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 pretty much still the county, I guess, free enterprise, lazy fair. It's driven by the market. And I think the market's going to straighten this out from the standpoint of occupancy. And plus, when we went through COVID, we got down to two percent interest rates and you can make anything work at two percent. You know, you make anything work. Now you're back to six, seven, eight. It's a whole different story. So the market itself is going to address a lot of this, you know?
Although one response to that might be that the people who can't afford that private interest rate are developers and investors rather than homeowners. I can go either way.
We need to go again. If we're going to leave it two years, just COVID. We'll look, I think we need to address housing at a later time in a different, different area. There definitely, no question, we have a serious need for housing. For our school teachers, our county employees, our volunteers, we've got the serious habits here. But we can set you into the house tomorrow night again if we're not going to object. So just just moving forward.
It will be very interesting to see what the public has to say about this.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on the planning commission agenda is was a twofold thing pushed to the planning commission by the board of supervisors. The first is the item that was discussed in public comment in which has, there's an error in the board agenda. And that is the discussion that was had by the board recently regarding subdivision code section one forty-seven thirty-eight and zoning ordinance section one seventy thirty-eight A six. So these are within your subdivision and zoning ordinance and they both say the same exact thing when they were added in March of nineteen ninety. And that is accepting conservation and agricultural zoning districts, subdivision of land into less than twenty-five acre lots may be allowed. See other applicable provisions as chapter of chapter one forty-seven. Only where public road rights away are fifty feet in width from the property to be divided to a state primary highway. This ultimately was subject to a determination written by the zoning administrator stating that the the wording of this was so broadly applicable and the lack of road rights of way that are fifty feet in width exactly really limits. It it, the way this is written, it limits the parcels that are actually able to be subdivided at all. Because you have to fit through those tests. And we have a couple rezoning, one rezoning quest in right now in Thornton Gap Church Road, which doesn't meet the fifty foot width. And that person wanted to rezone to allow a future subdivision. So that subdivision wouldn't be required with a strict reading of this. And then there was a previous subdivision on Woodard Road where the individual wanted to rezone from R five to R two. That was denied. And so the individual then wanted to subdivide under the prevailing zoning and that was denied because Woodard Road doesn't have a fifty foot right away. So after all of that, a local attorney for Mr. Taylor on Woodard Road sought a determination from staff. Staff reviewed the issue, myself, Ms. Summers reviewed it with Mr. Goff and came to the conclusion, and I believe that that's provided for on the board agenda, that it was not enforceable because of the way it was written. That has since been appealed, as was mentioned during the public comment hearing and is before the BZA for consideration. Mr. Rer can speak to that. I believe you've set your public hearing for your February meeting, which should be like the the end, towards the end of February. So at that point, there's really no action for the planning commission and the board on this other than staff does recommend that the wording of these sections be changed to something that better fits your intended outcome. And I assume that intended outcome is less to do about a fifty foot right away width and more about what the road can actually convey as far as traffic. So it asks the bodies to think about what you're really trying to get at with this section and craft some language that that drives to that point rather than what is in there right now. Staff provided a recommendation before the board of supervisors to the board. The board felt that it was, didn't hit the mark. So continued to look for something that better addresses the intent of the planning commission and the board.
Since the board didn't like it, what did they like?
There wasn't a lot of comment. Ms. Smith thought it could be tighter. Basically, what the staff said was there's enough other provisions in the zoning and subdivision ordinance speaking to road capacity needs, whether it's type one, type two, et cetera, that you can rely on those standards. And that, you know, if you have something that's zoned R five, then you can divide it into R five as long as you follow the division rules, which is if you're under three, through if you're lots, then it's administrative. If it's more, then it has to go through the plating process with the planning commission and the board. And so the the feedback was it should be something tighter than that. Which to me means more restrictive or more protective from a transportation perspective. We haven't really, staff hasn't zeroed in on wording that might suit that.
Can I ask? I'm trying to figure out what the limiting language is there. Is is the reference to article?
So this, this is the existing language?
I understand the existing language. I'm I'm talking about the proposed language because I understand the the problem. I think the perceived problem is the existing language. But I'm trying to understand the significance of the difference. And could you unpack meeting the requirements of Article five and six of the Rappahannock subdivision ordinance and Article eleven of the Rappahannock County ordinance? Is that, that is not just the definition of private streets. That's a condition that this language is intends to impose on any such streets in the subdivision.
Sure, so Article five is general streets regulation, which, you know, talks about how you, how the streets should be laid out, et cetera. Article six is street classifications and gets into the V dot road design standards, et cetera. Then zoning, that's Article twelve, private streets is where we get into the type one, two, three. So based on the intensity of use, those are then linked back to which type of road is needed for which use based on how many lots you have primarily?
So I guess, I feel like the new language does nothing. Because it just, it just says the streets have to lead to a public street. So unless it refers to a specific requirement within those sections, it seems like it's just saying streets have to lead to public streets, which it's intended to mean that if you have streets that meet the requirements of the ordinance, then you can subdivide. If you don't, then either you're going to have to upgrade your streets or otherwise, so.
But the ordinance is requiring that there be a fifty foot right of way.
Well, that section would be replaced.
Yeah, but what's it going to be replaced with?
Well, you know, the different type, the type one, type two have different type, different right of way widths depending on the situation, whether it's a street that can be extended or not. If it's a V dot road, the, how much traffic that V dot road is going to have to carry. It's all built into the, into that. Now, the bodies could decide to put something more specific in here. And so the feedback from the board was that proposed wording isn't it. So find some other wording. And we're looking for guidance.
Trying to find out what a V dot standard one road was.
Well, there's no such thing. So those are county things, yeah.
So that's not, that's not any kind of guidance. I think we're better off with what we, I mean, I mean, I shouldn't prejudge.
You know, you could have a, you could have a tenth, tenth, you could have a two path wagon trail, cart path in a fifty foot right away. That's not, that's not what you're trying to get at.
So so again, just trying to understand the thinking here. Is the, are those, is it the understanding, is position of staff that those requirements that are referenced here, the various articles, that those cover all of the possible subdivision situations with criteria that would lead to a pro, a a road standard?
So basically, what it, what it gets to is if you have a, say, two eleven primary road and somebody wants to come in and and build a new subdivision, say in Amosville where there's a bunch of R, R five, the roads that they would need to construct within the subdivision connecting to two eleven, that standard is already defined by your ordinance. Those requirements are in your ordinance. And so what this is suggesting that you need to meet those same standards if you, if you want to have access to, you know, the public road network. And you know, we think the public road network is the public road network. We don't, we don't have the opportunity to restrict or guide or channel traffic on any of our public roads. People can drive wherever they want. They can go down Turkey Ridge Road and, I mean, the parade can go down there. Whether there's a house or not, it doesn't matter. They can go on Woodard Road, doesn't matter. And so what we're saying is that there is a by right division opportunity from a zoning perspective, but we tell people they can't do that. It's not allowed. And you have a division rights along Turkey Ridge Road where you might have a five hundred acre parcel and they could create a number of two acre lots, add as much traffic onto a far less capable road than say a paved Woodard Road. And we have nothing to say about that and can't say anything about it.
But all of those requirements would already have to be met in addition to the fifty foot right of way.
No, the fifty foot right of way, that wording would be removed and replaced.
I know, but under current, under current zoning, you have the fifty foot, which is the narrow hole that you're saying no one can get through, but you'd still have to meet these. So essentially, we're giving up the first criterion of any kind of right of way and just relying on the road standard.
No, because the right of way standards aren't, are inherent to the roads, the other road standards that are existing. They're different versions.
They're different.
But I want to be clear that this does assume that if you have a public road, it's adequate. And I think that was the the step too far for at least one board member when it was discussed at that level.
Well, I can remember that the one we, when we spoke about it, the Turkey Ridge Road. My, I don't know the legislative history on this ordinance, but my, my, my impression is that if you have a five hundred acre lot, if you've got this provision in, you got to go through two public hearings to get there.
For rezoning first.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's the point of this.
Sure.
It must be the point of this.
I don't have any idea.
And that, I'm saying that I am assuming that that must be the point of this. So to eliminate it completely and then just point back to what we currently have on the books, I think to your point is just taking it out.
Yeah, and Mr. Goff's recommendation was just take it out. So we're trying to do something more than that.
And that's what we had at the meeting last time and I, and I didn't feel comfortable with that because I just think that, I think the purpose of this, at least for me now, sitting here is, is, okay, well, guess what? If you've got five hundred acres that you want to chop up, you got to change this and then you got to change that. You got to do two things, which is harder to do. It slows things down.
So so you know, if you think you're going to take a five, four hundred acre farm and rezone it?
Ten acres, whatever. That's not.
That ain't gonna happen.
That's not.
That ain't gonna happen.
I'm being hyperbo, I'm being hyperbolic.
That's too, that's way off.
Ten acres into R two, where you get five or, let's say twenty, twenty acres into, or thirty acres into R five, whatever. This would impose on top of that. So it was my point was is that I think that that's why that's in there. Because you can take thirty-five acres and say, hey, I want to chop it up into R five. And now you've got a, this thing slaps on top of it and you've got to, you've got to comply. But if you take this out, now that you don't have to do that. So instead of just being able to go and get it rezoned, you'd have to comply with this. But if you took it out, that's all you'd have to do.
When you say comply with this, is this the fifty foot you're complying with?
Yeah, no, 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 recall that the the ag and conservation is just completely carved out, right? Doesn't apply. But in ag.
Unless it's rezoned.
But in ag, you can have two acre lots, right?
Totally.
You can do it. So if you have a big enough parcel, you can carve off a few two acre lots along the road.
Five hundred acres, have twenty, have nineteen two acre lots.
Exactly. And that's the, that's the difference.
Yeah, 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 I know.
We're we're perfect, what this ordinance is saying, we're perfectly okay with somebody carving off several two acre lots on Turkey Ridge Road and we don't care. But we do care if they divide five acre lots on a paved road somewhere else.
So we've got a density clause for our ag land, which is very, very low. You've got very low density for big parcels. I think that that's the the logic behind that. And I think the logic behind this is that if a rezoning comes in to then put it down to small R two, R five or RV, which I don't, I guess you could do anywhere really, you just rezone it to RV. We don't have a technical designation that's not there in the county.
Sure.
This is what that is trying to stop with agriculture and conservation. That's the whole point is the density is low.
I agree. So if somebody could get through the rezoning gate, then they wouldn't be able to subdivide.
Yeah.
So so this is, this is why it was put on many years ago?
In nineteen ninety.
Is this why it was put on many years ago?
I don't know.
Huh?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
That's what I said at the very outset.
Mr. Henry may be the only person who knows why it came about in nineteen ninety.
This was pre Mr. Fraser too. He, we talked about this and he said he didn't know. So nobody knows why. I'm just saying if I read it now, what is the implication here? What stops?
I'm sorry, I I've lost track of something important. This is talking about subdivision independent of rezoning. You can have a forty acre parcel zoned R five. So I'm not sure why we're bringing rezoning into the conversation.
Because you could take ag land. This is a hypothetical.
Yeah.
You could take thirty-five acres of ag land, have it rezoned to R five.
Agreed to.
Sure, whatever. Compliments to the board once again.
Not an easy task.
But if this isn't, if you, if this is still in there, then you have to have a fifty foot road to.
Fifty foot right of way. Fifty foot right of way.
Now, if you've got a composition of a board that's willing to do that in the first place, they might just be willing to do the whole thing. But I, my, my, my reading of this was that you have two hoops you have to jump through to get to that place.
I, I feel like this is complicated enough, so let's not bring, can, can we just for a minute not talk about a rezoned scenario and just talk about an existing parcel that may be fifty or sixty acres.
Tom Taylor's, he wanted to do R five, and he couldn't do it because this doesn't comply.
So if he, if this hadn't been on the books, he still would have had to meet the requirements in those referenced articles.
With, with roads in.
With inside, inside the parcel. So it doesn't touch the roads leading to the, to the service roads.
Right. So, and Woodard Road is a very interesting situation, because on one side of the road, it's agriculture, and the other side of the road, it's R five. And so one side of the road can subdivide, the other side of the road can't.
The other side of the road has more intensive zoning, they would, we should probably be able to subdivide what you're doing.
Now, you're, you're fortunate that the agriculture side of the road is under conservation, isn't it? So you don't have to worry about it happening. But why should one side of the road be barred from subdividing to the, to the existing by right zoning, but the other side can't?
Yeah, but you will have areas in the county where you have those boundary lines. That, it will happen.
Yeah, yeah, so when, when a, when a road, when a secondary road is the dividing line, yeah.
But, but that, that, that has to exist. You cannot have those non-repairing areas where you don't have that happening. You have the villages, which will go up against conservation and ag, that, that will.
Right. Yeah, I guess in this scenario, the boundary line is the road.
Yes.
And there are not a lot of areas that are zoned other than ag and conservation.
Right.
You know, most counties handle their subdivision road issues by simply stating that any subdivision road has to be built to state standards to be accepted into the highway system.
And, and we basically say that as well. It's just that when you connect to the current public road network, it's inadequate. The, the, the road network is inadequate.
Yeah, you'd have a really nice road inside the subdivision, and then you'd come out on a Woodard Road.
Yeah.
That's not the intent.
But is it fair to say inadequate, or it doesn't meet what's?
It doesn't meet a current today's standard, yeah.
Right.
And it's very likely it'll pass all the traffic.
It just does not meet, it's not as good as what's being created.
Fair, fair point. Inadequate in my mind.
Well, if you can get there, if you can drive there, and public safety can get there, it's okay. You know, it's this pin limit you see going on all the time. You know, this fifty foot was a magic word for fifty years. All roads gotta be fifty feet, all subdivisions have to be fifty feet. Now, you go into these developments, as you move east, the interior roads are not fifty feet anymore. They're, they're lighter ones, they're, they're twenty feet, they're sixteen feet.
They're trying to have some traffic calming to get people to slow down, narrow things up, yeah.
So, you know, it's, 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 it's what is, creates a safe environment, safe and, safe and health, health, health for the people in the area. And if you got a thirty foot road that's maintained, paved, everything's okay, really. And you can't, and it's not like you're gonna go fifty-five miles an hour on Woodard Road pretty much in either direction. Maybe it's just not.
So the big picture here is that this has been appealed to the BZA. The BZA will make some determination, decision on the determination whether to, you know, affirm it or not. And then the board could decide to appeal that to court, but why would the board supervisor still do that? The board, the planning commissioner are sitting around the table to craft language that enacts what you want. So there's no need to take this to court. You just need to find language that you think appropriately protects whatever you're trying to protect from a zoning perspective and, or subdivision perspective, actually.
Presumably, the BZA in any court is only going to be looking at trying to untangle this messy language and apply it. We're trying to fix the language.
Right, so you, you, you can, you can render that moot by just providing language that is better.
Could I ask if there was any other sort of optional language considered and rejected?
Not yet. I mean, we've, Mr. Goff and I have talked a lot and compared this with the traffic event discussion we had. So do, do you wanna require a road hard surface that, that can pass traffic in both directions everywhere? It's, it is very odd to have public roads maintained by V dot that are single lane practically in a lot of places. That's just where, what we have here.
And, and essentially, though, what this is requiring in practice is you can have R five zoned land that's in a larger piece that you can't turn into the five acre lots that you have by right.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and you're not gonna be able to buy up and get a fifty foot right of way, just not. And you would have to have exactly fifty foot right of way all the way to a road.
I don't think that's clear at all. I don't think it has to be, I mean, I, I wouldn't read it. I mean, if I were court reading that requirement, I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be that inflexible on the fifty.
Oh, well.
You would read the minimum of fifty or, because they're not bigger than.
What are you saying? Are you saying?
I'm not saying, I'm just saying, it's not, you know, certainly be, at best, it would be a minimum of fifty feet. But, you know, if it's eighty feet, if it's a hundred.
I think the practical, the practical implication in, in any locality for a secondary road is that exactly fifty and a minimum of fifty are about the same thing.
Right. Fifty's as big as they get in other.
Uh, for secondaries. And see, Chester Gap Road is fifty because it was reconstructed. And they bought up enough to get that fifty foot right of way along Chester Gap Road.
So for, do any of the other road standards have right of way standards?
Yes.
That are specified, but that are lower than forty? Is there another rung below the fifty foot?
Yeah, so type, type two is a whole listing, depending on whether it's an existing road, an extendable road. And so they, they range, they vary. See if I can pull it up here, easiest way for me to get to it.
So while you're looking at that, it strikes me that one interim idea would be to require that the state roads meet whatever the requirements are of the private roads that you're building.
So the, for a type two road, which is five lots or less in a subdivision, that would be a proposed road fifty feet, constructed road, already constructed twenty feet, extendable road fifty feet.
V dot has a program that they do what they call paving in place. If they're not fifty foot right of way.
Right, that's the rural rustic road standards, yes.
Yeah. This wooden road could possibly be considered.
It was probably hard surface through a pro, a, a program like that.
It was.
Yeah.
Well, I, I own a property on the Wood Road, and I know when they pay, it's from Main Street to the top of the hill there. I was living there, and they actually paid this paving in place.
Today, when we ask V dot to hard surface a gravel road under the rural rustic road program, they like, they tell us they like to have at least eighteen feet of hard surface. Uh, but it's not hard and fast rule, but they like to. And if it's too narrow, they basically say the, the road's not really eligible for the, for this new rural rustic. Now, if they had to meet true secondary road standards, it'd be much higher, and it'd be way more costly. And that's why those sorts of projects ground to a halt, because you could never get enough right of way and have everybody along that road agree to it. So you could get away with a narrower right of way and a narrower road surface.
You'd have to have enough funding to do it.
Yeah.
So I, I just, for the purpose of progress, we're gonna recognize that there is something between no condition and a fifty foot right of way condition. Seems to me that our options would include that which is required for rural road, rustic road paved in place, or that which would be required for a, a type two road or something else. So that strikes me as a fertile ground for considering something between these two.
Yeah, so for example, type two requires you to have a single lane, but every three hundred feet, yards, you need to have passing zones.
Well, type two's pretty low.
Not less than three hundred feet is determined by the agent.
I know we talk a lot about that because of the whole tourist.
Yeah, yeah. Type, type one is a, is a, is a modern V dot road standard. So it's gonna be two full lanes, shoulders, the whole thing. Right, depending on the, you know, the amount of traffic. But there's not a scenario, current scenario where a V dot road is allowed to be single lane.
So a type two road is at least the standard that we have kind of adhered to for where, what you have to have in order to do a tourist home. Strikes me that to do a subdivision, you ought to have at least as much road clearance as for a tourist home. So as I'm thinking about this, I like trying to replace this with something more, a lower standard, but not no standard, that would be a type two road standard.
So road access that at least meets a type two road standard, whether it's public or private. That's something. Now, I do think you need to clean up your type two road standard at some point in time, but you keep that in mind.
Then it would have greater purchase when we do.
Yes, it would, it would. And that's certainly a middle ground.
So as long as we're honest here, one of the things that occurred to me as I'm reading through all of this is that if a zoning administrator decides to deviate from the existing ordinance and issues an opinion to that effect, the neighbors have no notice of that deviation.
Yeah, only in, only in the situation in which the minimum yield of, of their well could be impacted. That's the only.
So I just think that might be something we wanna think about, because honestly, if you have a road zoning administrator who's making, you know, arbitrary interpretations of existing ordinances, it does seem to me that, that affect the property rights of neighbors, that we should have a means by which the neighbors get noticed.
Oh, there's no statutory requirement about that today?
Only in a very narrow, now, of course.
Now with the one you mentioned about the well?
Yeah. But of course, the, at the end of the day, a board supervisor can always cure that with clarity in the ordinance.
My inspirations, if somebody did not appeal this, and I'm guessing that, I have no idea how the neighbors got noticed, but it wasn't from the zoning administrator, and it wasn't from anybody in the county government. So it just, they stumbled upon this, and it bound to affect their, their property rights and the traffic on the road and so forth. But we have no means of notifying those landowners that there's a deviation from the existing ordinance. That, and if the sixty days go by, then it's, it's, it's a decision that can't be challenged.
Well, it can't be challenged by that aggrieved party, but it could be changed by the board by modifying the ordinance we plan to.
But if by then, it's a D dot.
So, you know, we, we, let's, let's look at the little bit higher elevation here. So, you know, your R two and R five land is, is, is around the villages. Sparrowville, Flint Hill, Amosville. Uh, you, you look at, if you actually go and look at the maps, the road frontage where most of these, these areas are good roads that have already been rebuilt, you know, whether it's Seven Ponds Road, uh, the road there across May Hughes, is it Hackley's? That's not Hackley's, no. It's a Ford, that's been rebuilt. Flint Hill, going out Fodderstock, that area, been rebuilt. So it seems like maybe this Woodard Road might be one of the worst roads to address this situation, where it's a narrow paved road. And when you look beyond the, the road itself, and you look at a division, I think we really have to look at the division of the property, and what we want in, within that division. I think you want one type of road, and other counties do it this way. Falkirk, for example, if you go into one of these type of villages, they let you have one acre lots. Three lots, you do a gravel road, pretty easy. You go, go beyond those three lots, then the standards go way up. Basically, it has to be a road that the state will take into their system. So, uh, and historically, as time goes on, people have more and more problems with their neighbors if they have homeowners association that they're maintaining the roads on. You know, they don't maintain them, you get ditch issues, you get erosion issues that goes on to other people's properties. So, you know, it's, it's probably a, a good idea for us to think about numbers of lots. If you've got two or three, it's one thing. If you've got three to fifteen, three to twenty, it's something else different.
Doesn't that take us back to the original proposal?
So for sub, for subdivisions now, if you're five or fewer, you have to have a type two road. If you're six or more, you need to have a type one, which is a full V dot road.
So what you're, one solution that you're, like you're implying, is what we talked about earlier, which is requiring the same standards for the public road that you'd require for the private road that's built, cause those are tied to the number of lots.
Yeah, so, and it can be taken into the, the state system then, too. Either after it's been bonded and built, or down the road if it's been upgraded to their standards then.
So the, some of the difficulty there is, would we be looking at the number of parcels that are currently present on a, along a secondary road to determine whether that secondary road meets it? Or the full build out of that road, or, I mean, this, it gets complicated, I think.
Yeah, it does, but I think, I mean, you could start with the idea that it would just be based on the addition, because, you know, that's what you're adding, and so you'd be basically requiring that same level of ingress and egress all the way to the rest of the world.
Yeah. I mean, ultimately, the, the, the division point for us is whether you're allowing a single lane road with turnouts or you need two lanes. That's, and, and is gravel okay, or do you need asphalt?
That's the difference between type two standard and a.
Type one.
Type one.
Yep.
So what's the biggest, Gary, do you know what the biggest R five parcel we have in the county is?
What?
Gary?
I, I think there's, there's a large amount in Amosville, but it's right along two eleven. So this really wouldn't come to bear on that, because you wouldn't have a.
The largest one is probably the one that Jack Smith owned, and Kenny Glenn talked about, and they have.
That's not big. That's not, that's like twenty acres there.
This is, uh, this is certainly analysis for GIS, which we don't have. Someday, maybe we'll be able to understand those sorts of things.
I think that parcel of four hundred seven ponds and two eleven, it is probably a hundred acres of R five there.
Could be. Uh, now, if it has direct access to a primary, then this doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Right? Or if it has access to a secondary. The interior roads would have to, have to meet our current requirements.
Anyway, that's what the other section does.
Yeah, cool.
It's just, if you dump onto Seven Ponds, does Seven Ponds have a fifty foot right of way? And if it doesn't have a fifty foot right of way, or a minimum fifty foot, if that's, you know, what somebody interpreted to be, you can't do it.
So I'd like to propose, in the interest of progress, that staff try to craft language that would apply the same standards for the interior roads of a subdivision to apply to the public roads that serve it.
As a minimum threshold for subdivision. Yeah.
You know.
What if, what if you say you should look at the amount of traffic that might be dumped onto the particular road? I mean, that seems to me pretty clear as health, welfare, and safety.
Well, we, we would be by looking at the number of lots that are created in the subdivision. Are you taking issue with limiting the look just at the new ones? Are you saying another alternative would be to look at all of them?
Well, if you're, you mean so that type two standard for five or less subdivisions?
Is it, is it, is a, what's the threshold for five versus two?
Six and up is the full blown thing. The problem is, so is your road a cut through road? Is it just a dead end road? You know, are people using, how often are people using this road for other than accessing those parcels? As, so.
So this, the relatively simplistic idea is the standards for within the subdivision are already tied to the number of lots. All we're saying is, it shouldn't get any worse than that. It should, those standards should be maintained to the primary, I guess it would be to what, the primary or secondary?
Primary, so. You know, that's, that's just not gonna, in, in almost all cases, you're gonna have more than five existing buildings or lots accessed from a secondary road, which doesn't meet type one standards.
In most counties, they, they look at street improvements at the width of the roads, of the state roads, within the ability of, of, of the developer to address it that, that fronts that property. You know, if, 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 they're not, if somebody's doing a ten, twenty acre. doing a 10, 20 acre, 10, 20 lot development, they're not looking for that person to do street improvements two miles down the road. They're looking to do the street improvements that he has control over, the frontage.
And you're only legally allowed to, to, not require, but have a developer make off-site improvements to the transportation system if it's a proffer from a rezoning, right?
Right.
So if someone is gonna rezone a parcel from R5 to R2, you could say, well, that intersection down the road is a bottleneck and we can't let you increase the density from R5 to, or R2 unless you fix that, uh, intersection down the road. Well, for our situation, they don't want a rezoning. They just want to keep their existing zoning. We can't make them do anything offsite.
And it's a little bit like that tourist home on, that went across the dam. You can talk about changing the dam, but the idea is if you have to cross a dam, you can't do it. And it's the same thing here. We're not suggesting that they're gonna go out and make Woodard Road a type one road. We're saying if it doesn't exist, you can't do it.
Right. Which, which is telling somebody, your.
Zoning is as good as you thought it was.
You might have thought you bought a parcel with R5 zoning, but guess what? You didn't.
But in that case, there was also the other access off the other side, was there not?
Oh, yeah. If you build a bridge that meets VDOT standards over the floodway.
Wow.
Small project.
Yeah.
Sounds like a whole lot of litigation here.
So it would, it would be very helpful to know just how, just how many parcels does this really affect in the village areas that are in this situation?
That would be another helpful exercise to.
Yeah, to crawl through the maps, quite, quite frankly.
So, you know, so we're treating all these properties completely different that may be on the same road.
Oh, yes, exactly.
And you may have property that's more intensely zoned and not be allowed to be subdivided versus a property across the road that's, uh, is, is less zoned, that can be divided into the exact number of lots that you, you're trying to do by right.
Yes.
Wow.
So both of you can do it by right. One of you just is barred. Both of you are allowed to do it by right from zoning. One of you is barred to subdivide because of the road is, doesn't have the right right of way.
But then the other problem, can subdivide to exactly what you want to, but you're telling that you can't do it.
Yes.
Wow.
And so that's how staff and county attorney came to the position we came to.
Wow.
I, I think there's general agreement that what's here is kind of broken. Uh, like it, the question is, is there anything better than just scrapping it entirely?
And haven't, Gary, haven't we really kind of, well, I'm not gonna say ignored this, but we've operated without knowing that this kind of existed?
Well, I can tell you that current staff wasn't really tuned into this. Um, and the first, there were two parcels that were subdivided on Woodard Road and, you know, we, this had been come into the kind of universe of discussion during the rezoning, but then, you know, then Miss Summers administratively approved two five acre lots, which caused the neighbors to say, how did you do that? You're not allowed to do that. And we said, oh my gosh, you're right. Which then said, well, we can apply this everywhere. And I can't tell you if previous administrations ever applied it.
I have never.
Or it ever came up.
I don't remember.
Since 1990, when it was put in. And we looked at the minutes in 1990 and there's just no commentary about why it was done. But some other people might know. And I'm sure it was about a specific parcel and a specific person, um, but that's how zoning usually happens.
The plan says we want density.
In the villages.
Around, around and in, within the village. Now, we know that we have a need for houses. I'm not talking about $500, $100 homes, we've got just 20 years. But we know that we have a need for houses, for our people, people within our county. Now, we don't, we don't need the 711s, 711s going, but we do need a number of houses that our people that live and work in the county can afford to either rent or walk nearby. And I think this is an opportunity now that we can possibly make some changes, that we can get this in and around the villages, Sparrowville, Amosville.
Yeah, certainly there's a trade-off between having additional building lots and the traffic that it causes and the type of road that should be available to convey that. And, um, essentially, Mr. Taylor's property is, you know, a 20 acre zoning or something right now because he can't do anything with it other than build one house.
You know, Mr. Taylor's property, we, we've been thrashing that piece of property around for two or three years now. You know, and it, and it's, it's the acreage up there, a bunch of it's flood plain, you know, it's got sewer on it and you can do a few lots on it. And it's been very good. It's been a big issue to the community up there. You know, what really scares me is when you look at the zoning map at Amosville and you look at all that R, R5 and wow, you know, and you can, if somebody could go in there, they've watched what's happened at Cleverge's Corner, they go in there and they get two or three hundred acres of, of R5 and you look at those maps, you know.
There's a lot.
That's a lot of it down there. You go in and get that and bingo.
Now, if it has direct access to a primary road, these sections don't come to play.
Yep.
But they do have to build the interior roads.
They got all the money to build the interior roads. They got all the money to do a sewer system and they got all the money to do public water. They can do anything you want. They're national players. We don't have any national restaurants, national brand, brands here, but we'll have a national builder in the county.
Our saving grace there is that they can go over Culpeper Line and build a lot more density than what they can do here for the amount of roads they have to install.
Get a real pretty land out here.
That's true.
You know, real pretty five acre lots. And we've already demonstrated in county what five acre lot brings now. So, you know, that's where it's gonna happen at is in Amosville. Article coming out in the paper that's Flint Hill's kind of sleepy. Amosville is waking up soon.
So I, I, the direction, the kind of direction that I got was, you know, maybe see if there's some wording that can align with what we require for private roads. I think that would practically require most to be restricted unless you have a type one road because of the number of parcels that access that.
And perhaps do something recognizing the limited geographic systems that we have to talk about how many of these kinds of properties we're talking about? Because like you said, we keep talking about the same one and beginning to wonder if it's the only one.
Yeah, you can't, technically, I think you can't subdivide anything that's not on Chester Gap Road, right? So off of Chester Gap Road, there's been some subdivisions up there that shouldn't have happened. Um, because if you, if you're, anything that's not along Chester Gap, if it's off one of the private roads off to the side, definitely doesn't have a 50-foot right of way, should have been subdivided.
Yeah.
Right?
I don't think they're being subdivided. I think they're being put together.
Well, there's some, there was at least one change that happened, but you're right, way up top, it's tiny lots.
And part of what's going on is on the Warren County side, I think.
Yep, and then we can't control that really. So we'll, we'll keep working on it. Um, we, my goal is to have the bodies move forward with some language, um, in a parallel path to whatever happens at the BZA, et cetera, to, um, make their life easier so they don't have to worry about a critical decision because the board just changes the words.
Right.
And we'll make their decision, whatever their decision could be, commute.
Right.
I don't think it's gonna happen in time.
That's the problem.
Okay. Excellent progress. So the second half of that agenda, I think, is a much easier one. Uh, this was brought forward by, uh, by Mr. Fraser. Um, is a discrepancy that had been in our ordinance for a little while. Uh, for some reason, the powers that be decided to have family subdivision language in the subdivision ordinance, which makes a ton of sense, and copy it into the zoning ordinance as well, which doesn't make a lot of sense. Then along the way, uh, the planning commission in Florida decided to change one of the provisions within that duplicate code, but only in one of the sections, causing the two copies to be different. Uh, and so what staff has recommended is that within the zoning ordinance, you, uh, close some of these, you delete essentially everything that is copied from the subdivision ordinance and replace it with a family transfer, transfers exempted from the density limitations contained in 17037, provided that it meets the requirements of 14736, which is the duplicate reading. So let's not say the same thing twice. Let's just refer to it and get rid of the actual conflict which is added in, again, I think that same 1990 is when the conflict.
So you're getting rid of the old or the new language?
We're getting rid of the old language that wasn't changed. It was changed in the subdivision ordinance. It wasn't changed in the zoning ordinance. Um, and there's zero reason, just like this other provision we just talked about, where the same language for the 50-foot right of way is in the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance. It's a terrible idea. It should be set in one place in the right place, right? Um, and not duplicate where you have a much more likely opportunity to modify one and not the other.
Well, as long as we're modifying it, I, I looked up the Code of Virginia on, uh, provisions for a subdivision of a lot for conveyance to a family member, which states any county's, in any county's subdivision ordinance shall provide for reasonable provisions permitting a single division of a lot or parcel for the purpose of sale or gift to a member of the immediate family of the property owner, including the family member's spouse, subject only to any express requirement contained in the Code of Virginia and any requirement imposed by the local governing body, uh, that all lots of less than five acres have reasonable right of way of not less than 10 feet or more than 20 feet, providing ingress and egress to the dedicated recorded public street. And I'm wondering if we should.
So there are actually, there are two or three different state code sections that refer to family divisions depending on, and, and counties can fit into different ones depending on whether you're next to a high growth area, you are a high growth area. Our type three road is, uh, set to align with those requirements. And so for a family division, that's, they need to have type three roads, which is very strange and have very inadequate rights, rights of way.
Good kidding.
And that is the other major carve out that the ordinances do for a family division. You get to not follow density and you get to not have to follow the type one, two road standard. That's state driven. You can have a very narrow right of way with an inadequate road if you are dividing it for your family, but we know that these get sold off to all kinds of people. And then you're left with a five or six parcel subdivision, which is what our ordinance allows, um, with a very narrow right of way. And that's, you kind of have to allow that. We don't have to allow five or six, but we do because it's, it is an effective way to help local families provide for the, you know, the, their family.
To the point earlier that we haven't done anything, that we have done this. Um, so is there anything in the proposed change that goes against the state that was just?
No, so that should be aligned if you were to look at the, it'll take me forever to pull it up. If you were to look at the type three road standards, they're, they should be aligned with that. Let me.
I just wasn't sure. But it is, I mean, no more than 20 feet.
It's, why? Why?
Cause they don't want a big road. They don't want it driving down to.
They don't have a big family. And they're all driving.
There's actually in the family transfer, the lot to be transferred, blah, 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 uh, to be created on not less than 10 acre, 10 feet or more than 20 feet to a dedicated recorded street. So, so that tries to copy that language. And then if you go back to the type three road standard, it's duplicated there. Uh, it says, it would, you would think we would want to require more than that. And they probably put that in there to say, the state said, no, you can't put crazy 50-foot road standards on a family division. You have to allow them to have a small road, but. So I think this is a kind of a simple one.
Uh, seems, seems, looks good to me.
So we're asking the planning commission to have a public hearing on this matter at February, in February two, not the other matter, MK.
Well, we're looking at that. Um, I thought it was interesting that they require you to own that property for five years.
Right, so this holding, holding period.
Yeah, that kind of gives us some cover for the Airbnb type of five year.
And that's intended to people, you're not supposed to subvert the subdivision ordinance by, you know, buying a parcel and then saying, I'm gonna give this part to my kid. And then it's really just, uh, we're just trying to make parcels and sell them.
Right.
It, enforcement is very, very difficult.
Except for we require that you hold that property, that subdivision for two years, which is like the shortest out of anyone. 15 years in Warren County.
For what?
For a child.
For a family subdivision?
Five years in Culpeper, three in Madison, 10 in Falkirk.
You've done your homework.
15 years in Warren County.
You want to make sure you graduate from high school.
They also, you have a chance for that to a 12-year-old.
We don't know about that.
Which is interesting. Most of them are 18. I just thought two years was.
Yeah, so that was it.
Kind of not where we are as a county when it comes to that kind of game.
That's, that sort of thing definitely could be changed. You could do it at the same time. You could do it at a later time. Uh, family division is, it's two.
Brian, what did you say?
Uh, family division is, uh, is an item that has been brought up as something the board wanted to look at it.
What is that?
Also possibly providing greater opportunity. And so instead of five lots, maybe it's five plus one with a special exception, maybe it's six plus one, just to give more capacity. But Mr. Fraser's point was, let's at least fix this, this inconsistency. Um, and he, he thought before his institutional knowledge left the body, he wanted to make sure people remembered that.
I think the biggest abuse of this family division has been in Amosville, maybe, yeah, on route 211, where now the candidate is, or, or the building department is dealing with the erosion issue, the DEQ, with that five lots that were created or planted there. Family members owned it for years and years and then they sold it and, and, and then to one person. And he went to get a building permit, thought he had an existing lot. And bingo, DEQ hit some for, um, uh, water issues, got to build a $30,000, $40,000 pond. So, out of the blue.
That's a common plan of development.
So, you know.
So I, this is something I think, you know, more holistically, the bodies should look at family divisions and look at the holding period, look at whether it should be five or six lots or something else. Um, but at least, you know, our staff would encourage you, let's, let's fix the broken part and then, um, look at this when you start to get into the ordinance reviews of who can do what where.
Well, and again, by having a hearing on this limited change, we also may get some input that could inform us later.
Yep. Um, so, uh, staff has requested this to go to public hearing at your February 21 meeting. The board's, the planning commission hasn't taken any action on that in the past. It probably would be appropriate for planning commission to consider a motion to authorize staff to advertise the public hearing for February 21.
Make a motion that we, uh, have this advertised for public hearing in February for the date mentioned.
I see.
Okay, so Mr. Henry and Ms. Ritter.
All in favor?
Aye. Any opposed?
Great.
Aye.
And so then that'll pass to the board at your March meeting as our intention, so if the board would so authorize staff to advertise that public hearing for your March meeting, that would be wonderful.
I'll make a motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Motion, a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Take it, Ms. Smith, that was an aye for you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. Uh, so I don't know the, how the bodies best want to go through this. Uh, when you last, uh, the board talked through, um, the first iteration of the four articles that had significant changes and staff provided some margin comments on those. Uh, we sent those to the Berkeley group. And, uh, one of the big ones was that, uh, the ordinance as they prepared it wasn't codified the way we need it to be with the chapter 170 with various section numbers. So the big change here is that they've, they've moved closer to that. And you'll see in the, uh, attachment that shows the fully reorganized document is now has that more, um, familiar section 170 dash number. Uh, and so we also worked with our codifier to confirm that we could have the structure that is chapter, article. that is chapter, article, division, section. And so each article can be separated into divisions just for organization, okay? They still have separate section numbers. So that was done, and that's laid out in the full document. There's still a lot to be reviewed in that full document, and I think at some point, these four articles with the big changes really need to get wrapped into the, to the full ones, so we have a better idea where, where we are and where we're going. The four articles, staff reviewed the margin comments that were provided last time, and if they're incorporated, there are no margin comments, for example, Article 1, I didn't provide any other margin comments here. For some of the other articles, there are more comments. So, I don't know how you want to go through this, if you want to do it in some sort of detail. We think Article 1 is getting much closer to a point where it's going to be easier probably if we start to take some of these track changes off, that the boards and the public can always look at a track change version, but we can start to focus on a cleaner version to make sure it reads and says the things that you want. Through this iterative process, that you eventually get to a point where you have a document you feel you're comfortable to put out to public, formal public hearing. And so before you get to any formal public hearing, you'll have any number of opportunities like this for you or the public to review and consider and suggest potential changes, identify things that might, they might think are missing, that have changed from the existing ordinance rather than just moved around. We've talked about a lot of the big items that have changed, which are really not in Article 1. But I think most important is, this is a kind of a protracted journey through iterative steps, and I think while we want to keep track changes, at some point, looking at changes on top of changes on top of changes gets very difficult to read. And you need to start looking at, at least, parallel paths where you have something that's very clean and something that changes. So if anybody has any questions about Article 1, which is really the highest-level boilerplate information, I'd be happy to try to discuss them. At some point, we're going to want to have the Berkeley Group back. They've offered to provide a facilitated session with the community, if that's what the bodies want. You know, totally up to you guys. I can share the sections that we did have comments in, which is this Article 3, which is the 40-page article, has a lot going on there. And that's really the process and procedure items.
Or the site plans and some of those.
Site plans, all the different types of applications for everything.
I do have a question about Article 1, just real quick, under interpretation.
What section number is that?
70-7, Division 2.
Yes.
So, Ms. Ritter brought up an interesting point, when we have a situation where the zoning administrator says, I'm not going to enforce the zoning ordinance that went through two public hearings and was noticed a lot. Are we, is there a mechanism by which if we're, if the zoning administrator is not going to be enforcing a zoning ordinance, that there could be notice?
No, I, I don't think there would be any state prohibit, prohibish, provision for the locality, including and requiring more notice than the state requires, if that's what you want to do.
No, I'm just, I'm just curious, because I do think it's a really interesting point. We put so much emphasis on zoning and, excuse me, on noticing for zoning and the ordinance changes, and yet when one is found to not be enforceable, it's just...
Most, most determinations are not of the flavor that would do what this most recent one did.
No, I understand, but we do kind of have remarkable zoning.
Yeah, and now...
And that's specific to here.
The, the requirement relative to the minimum yield for wells was just put in the last five or so years.
Interesting.
Of course, the last five years sometimes is 10 years, if you're not paying attention, but in my relatively recent zoning memory, that was put in for this same kind of concern where a significant change could happen, it could really have an impact on a neighbor from their ability to continue using their home and have access to water, drinking water. And it's, it's imperfect, the way it's written, but it was probably better than what was nothing before. So, absolutely, so the, your local code could require, for example, any determination that's may be posted on the county website, or something like that.
It's a significant action to say that something that's been passed legislatively is not going to be enforced.
Sure.
By the, that's where the buck stops, is with her, and then it goes through the sort judicial process after that, but the point is, is that, that's significant, and it doesn't happen that often.
Yeah, sure.
Just something to contemplate.
Well, I, I think it actually, that's a pretty rare situation, but I think the relevant consideration may go a little beyond that, where, where the zoning administrator chooses to use a discretion that they were granted that is, you know, deemed significant. Right now, that also happens without any insight of the public, so, I mean, there's no, there's no sunlight on that. Is that, does your concern extend to some of those decisions? I don't know if I can think of an example off the top of my head.
Well, I think most, in, in, let's say most, many if not most zoning administrator applications through the ordinance are fairly objectively driven. There's, there's less subjectivity, usually measuring against some sort of metric and determining whether it meets it or not, a minimum yard or this, this or that. But there are some that are subjective and built in, and, and that zoning administrator is given great power in, by the state code. But certainly you could codify more sunshine, if you will, by, let's say, for example, requiring all determinations to be posted publicly on a notice board or on the website, and just have a running list of them all forever that people could go to. Now, you could even decide that if there is a particular parcel that every time a determination is made, that the adjacent parcel owners are notified, just like they would be if there was a special exception or a rezoning or something like that.
Actually, this is slightly different, because you have an existing ordinance, and then you have a zoning administrator who issues a permit that's in violation of the ordinance, and that is what needs to, to be noticed, to the...
In this case, it would be, it would be recording a plat in violation potentially of the subdivision ordinance, but not necessarily permit. But I, you, I agree, and so in most situations, you're specific to a particular parcel, and you, there would be immediately adjacent neighbors, you could require some sort of notice there, but in some instances, it might be that the interpretation of what the definition of kennel means, and by parsing the language, and that's not necessarily applicable to one parcel, you can't just go find anybody who might have a kennel next to them someday, so you have to find some more general way to broadcast that information or post it or, which certainly, I guess, you, I don't see any reason why you couldn't mandate more disclosure than is required by the state.
Well, I don't want to be burdensome, and I don't think that...
There are ways to do it that are not, I mean, if you're going to write a letter, it's not that hard to post it somewhere.
But I think to Steph's point, I mean, it is significant. This very specific situation is interesting, and that's when I was reading over this, and I was just, I, I just wanted to contemplate that for a minute, but I don't mean to dwell on it, but I do think it's a good point.
Would, would an effective way be to have it, to put on the planning commission agenda?
Sure, I mean, that would be another way to do it, to require it be...
So that we, not only does the public get notice, but we get notice that something appears to be broken.
Yeah, I, I don't know if you could kind of usurp the inherent zoning administrator's authority by having to have the decisions ratified by the planning commission. I don't know if the state would allow you to go that far, but public notice you could do.
We've kind of given that away, by the way we've written it, but...
Well, I think the way the state code is...
The fact is, we don't get any feedback if we don't, so I, I think...
Sure, that's another way you could, and you could do that by, you know, policy or by ordinance. So if you do it by ordinance, then, you know, it's written in the big book and you have to have public hearings and all that, and so it's not lost in time. You could do it by policy that is, you know, less rigid.
This kind of opens up a great big Pandora's box, because basically, anything a zoning administrator does, and then if that person goes and gets, talks to the county administrator or, or to the county attorney, so, so all these documents follow what his decision was, it's almost like a FOIA request, basically, that you're, you're putting out there in the time that you do this every month to, to do this, and what's small, what's minor and what's major, all these decisions that have to be done.
So we're talking about something very specific, which is very major, which we passed the zoning ordinance, the county did in 1990, and then the zoning administrator's saying, I will not enforce that. That's very significant. That's like a statutory crime that's passed, and the sheriff's like, I'm not enforcing that. I mean, that's an equivalent, it's just, she says, uh-uh, and shall issue a permit. I, well, I can't say that, that's not a foregone conclusion, but the point is, is that, that's a significant thing that I agree with you on.
Well, the point is, is that everybody knows it, so whatever system's out there works, but everybody knows it. I mean, everybody knows it, so there was no value here.
Yeah, but, but the point is, is that we notice all of these other things before we pass them, and then, I was just reading through it, and, you know, there's stuff that the zoning administrator's supposed to do, and it was just interesting to me that if parts of our zoning ordinance are not going to be enforced, which doesn't happen that often, I mean, it really doesn't. And to your point, it could be a permit, and then it would be in direct violation of a zoning ordinance. It's just an interesting concept to think about. But I agree with you, I don't think that we need to go down this paper route of, you know, hey, like every time there's a decision made that's kind of ambiguous or weird, no, we don't need that.
Hopefully, we all learn from the errors that we see, and then we become better servants of the public, and I can't help to not believe that because of this, that the county government is, is more alert to, to, to things in the ordinance and to pass things, award, look up. This week, I had a property, I needed to check on some historical events on it. I called, asked questions, took those questions, I got answered, asked more questions based upon those responses, and everything got answered. You just, the level of, of your quest, you just have to be in depth on what you're asking for, what you're looking for.
I think there's a discernible line between interpretation that is, authority that is given to the administrator, and determination not to enforce something, if that is in fact what has happened here. So I do think there's some level of additional check for an extreme situation that isn't quite the bureaucratic nightmare that you're describing for any determination authority, discretionary authority that the zoning administrators granted. It seems like if this was a conscious decision, that this was not going to be enforced because it was illogical or unenforceable or impossible, that's a pretty rare situation that I think would want to come to us.
This decision that was made was not made independently by that person only. That person got input, I think, from...
It was a conference with myself, Ms. Summers, and Mr. Goff.
Yeah, which is exactly why you want transparency and sunshine on it, I think, which is why we notice things. The only reason we notice things is so the public knows, that's, that there's, there's a record for that. And so, I don't know when was the last time this happened, is anybody's memory where there's never a zoning ordinance where the administrator says, I'm not enforcing it. So it's a rare situation, and it is very, it's unique. So anyway, just something to think about.
But takeaways, absolutely, you can do that.
Yeah, we'll think about it.
And, and so, there will be a lot of time for planning commission, the board, to consider what words should go into a draft that is eventually sent to the public for their input through a formal public hearing, and, you know, likely before that for informal, I mean, this is an opportunity for informal input, but I, I assume there'll be more opportunities for informal input, and then eventually, opportunity for formal input, and if we're lucky, that public hearing will result, will result in an adopted ordinance, and if not, maybe it'll be like the signed ordinance where, you know, people say, nah, and so we've got to go back to the drawing board, which we'll talk about later.
So, so tying this back to where we started, this Article 1 would be the place to look for planting something like that.
I think so.
Planting something like what?
Something that says, in the event that the zoning administrator deems a, a, a part of the ordinance unenforceable, notice shall be given in, you know, some way.
You could also put something in a later article and devise a process that if you wanted a determination, you have to have a very specific application process, and there's going to be a, a way that we work through it, and you can actually, I mean, the state code actually allows much more flexibility than you have. The zoning administrator can actually change stuff, but we don't want to do that, and we don't have that.
Well, I think, again, we're, I, I think there's sensitivity to Al's point, that we don't want to create, you know, we doubt, we, we write the article to give that discretion thinking that we've got the right criteria. That's, that's not what we're talking about, we're talking about another level of determination.
Yep. So I think here, there might be other places as well where it might make sense, maybe it's a definite, some definitions type of...
Those would be specific, I mean, I can see, you know, we might say, you know, if, you know, if a definition of a, if, if, if a definition is deemed inadequate because, you know, a kennel is not a kennel, a training facility, you know, maybe there's other triggers that are specific to a section, we could add those, but I think here we're talking about a general tilt notice.
I like that tilt note.
You remember those games, huh?
Any other takeaways from Article 1 at this point?
So here, in your opinion, Article 1 is like...
I think we're getting closer, on all these, I would say we're getting closer. I think, as I noted earlier, we need to keep, keep the track changes the best we can. It's tricky because things are moving around, but we need to move towards a clean version as well, that's more readable and allows a...
You've studied these things multiple times and reviewed and reviewed and reviewed them and talked apart. What's your remaining concerns that you have in, in these right now?
I, I don't, I don't have any major, anything major in Article 1. Article 3 is where there, I've still...
There's some heartburn?
Several things that we need to address. And Article 2 is, is, is not, it's, like in our current ordinance, 170, 139, that talks about the planning commission, and 170, 140 talks about the BCA, it's all that stuff that is, it's not really too subjective stuff. Article 3, and I apologize, is small. It's, so this is Article 3, permits and applications, so that's for all different types of applications, whether it's a, just a regular zoning permit, a variance, an appeal, a map amendment, a text amendment, that's all in here. So this is really the heavy part of the process and procedure. And the way that it is structured right now is that there's this Division 1 in general, which seek, which I understand seeks to set kind of the, the core application requirements for all of the, all of those different types of, of, of applications. And then the subsequent divisions for each specific type then adds on top of it, and that's not really structured very well right now, in my opinion. That's what my note here is, is getting to. And that, so this, we talked before a little bit about this pre-application meeting, about whether, how that should be written, and this section is now really pulled back quite a bit, and really only says that if you have any sort of meeting or anything that happened before you applied, that's no, that has nothing to do with any kind of approval, right? You can't have a conversation with somebody and said, but you told me I could build this there. Those are just conversations. Once you submit your application, then we start really talking about your application. Before that, it's just a conversation. So that's all, that's all that 170, 40 says now. And then 41, 42, 43 get to, you know, what is it that you need to submit for every single type of, of application that, that we could even contemplate? And it's this kind of base core information that is required. 170, 44, right now, this is set up as I, as I read it, that a, a application for pretty much anything, a special exception, amendment to the zoning map or variance would need to be by notary. And I think that's not a good idea. That will really make it difficult for people to apply. Right now, we only require it for amendments, as I understand. So I think that needs to be changed. Because I don't think we need a special exception to be notarized. Maybe you do. And there's just a busted reference in 2286. We, I see this a lot, that the A, there's only A, there's no B, C, D. And then there's a whole series of numbers of things that zoning ordinances are allowed to have. So it's just, it's supposed to be 2286, A7.
Gary, can I ask, is zoning administered, I know that the applicant has time limits, but there's no indication of how long the zoning administrator has to determine whether or not the application is complete. In other words, you can file your papers and wait and wait and wait.
Yeah, so this would be certainly a place to put that sort of restriction. I, I think you want to protect the citizens, but at the same time, I don't think you want to build in a, a a legal issue for yourself. So when you're writing the rules, you have some advantages. So you, but the, the board in the planning commission. So, yeah, I mean, you can definitely put something in here. And you just decide what you think's appropriate.
If I were an applicant and I'd been waiting for months and all of a sudden I get something from the zoning administrator that says, I gotta get all this information in this amount of time, I would be really irritated.
Yeah, so the state code does include some time limits and some different application processes. And you'll, you might see those in here, but out in general. And so I think the bodies could definitely say that completeness review would be done within X number of days, 30 days or whatever, however many number of days. There's always going to be some potential debate on whether the zoning administrator doesn't think it's complete. The applicant thinks it's complete. Ultimately, the zoning minister has to be the arbiter of that. But, because that's the gateway before it ever even gets to the planning commission.
We definitely hear from the citizens that, you know, it's kind of a setting expectations, which is what I'm hoping we're going to help with, with these revisions, is to allow people to at least have some general idea how long the process should take. And if there is something missing, it should be flagged early on and not near the end of the time.
Right. It, it's, it's tough to make it one size fits all because, you know, in some cases, an application might be a couple tiny things and others it might, you know, it could be a very complicated commercial package. So we just, I think there are way, there are probably some metrics that could be put in and we can look, see what others are doing. And so the first division that's not general is speaking to text and map amendments. So there's that code reference. The Code of Virginia says that, that amendments can happen by resolution of the board, motion of the planning commission, or application or petition of an owner. And so my comment here simply just mirror the languages in the Code of Virginia. So nobody has any confusion. You've talked about wanting to allow individuals to apply for a text amendment. And so that is retained in here. You talked about it in your previous meetings. So then what, what must those applications include? And so again, my comment is, so should we be repeating everything here? Are we going to include the base items in the general section? We just, they just need to decide how they're going to do that. And it might make more sense just to repeat them in each division. Because if I want to do a rezoning, I'm just going to go to the rezoning section and I'm not necessarily going to pay attention to the general section. Even if it makes your ordinance a few lines longer.
My concern about that is you're going to get into, you change it one place and you forget to change it in the.
Except for if you change it in one place, it's for the application for an amendment versus the application for a variance versus the application for whatever. And that's okay because it's not a conflict. It's just differing requirements for those different paths. And some of them have different requirements anyway.
I mean, a clear reference, it seems to suffice.
But some, some of those subcategories do require different things.
Well, then you would, it wouldn't be a straight reference.
So it's, it's intended to set up right now with the general and then these, these building items further down. So for these zoning text and map amendments, the, the rezon, these applications must include, and then when we get into the site plan discussion, the way the ordinance is set up right now is really there's three different levels of drawings, if you will. There's a sketch plan, which is really minimal, and that was in our ordinance before. It wasn't really laid out very well. And then there's a minor site plan and a major site plan. And so as you start to look here, it's, you start to identify which is required for what type of scenario. And that's really bears out when you get later into the site plan. So here you can see, for a zoning text or a map amendment, you must submit a scaled sketch plan. Right? So not a minor site plan or not an engineer plan, but a, a sketch plan. However, and if the rezoning is requesting a change to the residential zoning district, which allows for more dwellings, then you have to do a minor site plan, which would have to lay everything out. And so this is something we don't require right now, something that wasn't required during the most recent rezoning. So we didn't, we couldn't know for sure how the person wanted to lay out their more, the R2 setup versus the R5. They did share that, but they weren't required to share that. So this is now saying.
It was also hypothetical to say.
Right, yeah.
As a scenario.
And so just from my education here, a minor site plan versus a major site plan, you think a major site plan is way too overkill for this.
Absolutely. They, they would have to do a major site plan eventually if they did a, if they developed the subdivision. But at the time of rezoning, it's not needed at that point in time. But it would be required when they're starting to put in, you know, roads and ditches and water lines and all those things, if the subdivision required those things. So this is just what's required at the time of a rezoning application. So if you're just rezoning a parcel from, you know, I don't, that isn't increasing the residential zoning. It could be from village commercial to general commercial. You would have to provide a sketch plan, but you wouldn't, wouldn't have to do a site plan at that point. You would have to do a site plan before you develop the parcel, before you get your zoning permit. But you wouldn't have to do it at this point.
Is, is, are the requirements of a sketch plan articulated any further than that?
Yes. And then if you're requesting conditional zoning, proffers, then you need to meet the requirements in what is actually Division Three a little lower. Talks about procedure for review. All this black stuff is something in our ordinance already. It's just moved around. And then the procedure, so it goes to the planning commission. Now, Division 11 is a constant public hearing requirements that align with the Virginia Code 1522204. And every, every one of these just refers to our new Division 11 of this article, the last division. So planning commission onto the board for map amendments and text amendments, right? So this is all about map amendments and text amendments. It's wording. This just began lining up with the, the state code that says motion, resolution or petition. So now Division, so Division Two is text or map amendment. Now we're on Division Three, which is conditional zoning, which has some very specific things that we need to pay attention to that are in state code, which they have brought in here, including important is this proffer statement that says each proffer made in connection with this application for rezoning was made voluntarily and complies with applicable law. No agent of the county suggested or demanded a proffer that is unreasonable. And so if we did demand an unreasonable proffer, then they can be overturned. Another thing that it requires, as you look at the application, is an impact analysis demonstrating the justification for the proposed proffers. And so it's hard for somebody to say that we required an unreasonable proffer when they have developed the impact statement saying why the proffer's needed. And so it might be that they're, they're, in many cases for us, the proffers are, I'll agree not to do these five by right uses in this zoning district that are normally allowed because they're, you know, they're particularly intensive. But I want to rezonate to the, to general commercial. I just agree not to do retail. And so they would have to have a, an impact analysis stating why they believe that's true and why they think it's appropriate. And that's why this item above, it says, if you're going to have a conditional rezoning, one of the things you need to apply, submit is a site plan. And I, my comment is, was, is that I don't think that is necessary in this case. Just because it's conditional rezoning doesn't necessarily require you to have a site plan at this stage. It might simply be to carve out certain by right uses. Now, if there is a rezoning that increases the residential density, whether there's conditional proffers or not, you already require that minor site plan from the earlier section.
Is a proffer statement still required if it's suggested by the county?
We, we don't suggest proffers, ever. And what this is basically saying is the only reason they come up is because an applicant has identified impacts.
Why don't we put that in there?
Well, that's what.
Unreasonable.
Because that's the wording that's in the state code, unreasonable proffers. We, we are allowed to suggest, we can suggest reasonable proffers, but it's so subjective and somebody can decide what is reasonable, what is unreasonable. So we just link them all to the impact that the applicant has suggested to us. And then whatever proffer that they put forward, that rezoning is decided on the merits of those proffers that are in place. And if, and if they don't provide proffers that, that the board supervisors thinks mitigate the impacts, then it's not approved. You don't haggle with them over, your proffers were better, we'd approve it. You just, they get to pick what the proffers are. You decide whether it's acceptable or not.
Yeah, but I'm saying if you suggest it.
It's just dangerous to get into the suggesting game with the proffers. Because the.
They say this county, we do not suggest or demand proffers.
We could, you could say that. And we went about it differently in the wording. And many localities go about it this way with requiring the applicant to state this.
Especially if it's your suggestion or demand, why am I writing an impact statement about?
We're not writing an impact statement. The applicant is.
That's what I'm saying. Why shouldn't there be one then?
There is only an impact statement if the applicant decides to proffer something.
I'm saying it's not your suggestion.
Whose?
County administration.
We don't want to do that.
And I said, check it out.
What are you speaking about?
I, I think it's always going to be subject, you know, you're in some meeting, you're having a conversation and someone says, well, what if it was this way instead? And so, you know, somebody has spoken those words and the applicant takes it as, okay, I'll, I'll agree to do that. So you're always going to get into these, the possibility of whose idea was it. This takes away the possibility of somebody picking up something and saying, they told me to do it this way and then they changed it.
It's intended to. And I, I'm sure there are different ways to get at that. That's the rationale for the way, why the wording is the way it is. I'm sure that there are other ways to do it.
You know how these conversations go. We do a lot of what if stuff around the table. And that could be picked up as, oh, they're signaling that if I agree to do this, they'll do it.
Then staff could say, please, please, please do not suggest any proffers. And somebody, you know, it's just a natural conversation. It's, well, you know. So that, that's the key part there. And that's a big hole in our current ordinance, which is one of the things we talked about early on is that you need to protect yourself better. Fortunately, we don't do a lot of resentments here, right? They run with the land forever, just like, just like a zoning designation. And this tracks, which we don't now, is that we need to have a clear way to track these conditional zoning. Because essentially what you're doing is you're creating an entirely new zoning district. So you have RR5 and then you have RR5 asterix for this particular parcel. And only this particular parcel has these special rules with it because they were attached to. And so you need to be able to track those. In a world with GIS, you would probably be able to see that with a different color, hatch pattern or something like that and be able to drill in and see what it is. So special exceptions, current ordinance, right, talks about special exceptions and special use permits. And then you just change the table to remove all the special use permit designations. And so now this is, there's nothing in this proposed ordinance that talks about special use permits. I think there might be one that I still caught that's in there, but it'll need to be changed. And so this is the, these special exceptions are most of the applications that we see that, except for just regular zoning permits, that you guys don't see. So this, this section is made less detailed in a lot of ways than your current ordinance. And the Berkeley group suggested that would be a way to provide more flexibility than what you potentially have now. And that's particularly with, I think it's Section 17053 now, which is the list of conditions that the board might impose. And so their thought is, why would you constrain yourself to the list of 15 things? Leave it wide open. But they should always address a perceived impact on the parcel. And so this, this very beginning still hits at the critical aspects of a special exception and that the uses are made compatible with their surrounding uses to the imposition of conditions and restrictions. And that it's granted only if the applicant can satisfy the requirements of the article and the proposed uses otherwise permitted. So the onus is on the applicant and the reason they're allowed, this uses were allowed on a particular parcel is because there's conditions that mitigate concerns or the parcel's so big that for something that doesn't need conditions. Really nothing new here. The, so as things were moving around, this, this is really just repeated twice, repeated once. So you can see in addition to general application requirements in Division One, so the note to them earlier was if we're really going to have this segregated thing, they need to really clean that up. Fees, everything requires a fee. So why are we listening here? It should be in Division One, if that's the way we're going to do it. And then there's sections about extensions and renewals that are in our current ordinance. And my suggestion is they should all be bundled up in a later section to be clear. Because right now you have basically two flavors. You have a renewal, which is basically the time, there was a time limit and they can come apply again. You follow the same rules as you followed in the first place. There's an extension where your current ordinance allows, and you've used recently, if one of the conditions of the special exception was that the zoning administrator can extend this for two years upon favorable finding, then she can do that. There doesn't have to be a new public hearing at that time. Or you could have in the, in the regulations for that particular use for any. Or you could have in the, in the regulations for that particular use for any, call it a kennel, whatever. If it's approved, they can automatically be extended by the zoning administrator for a certain period of time. I don't think we really have too much of that. More the former where a condition could say, well, you know, if this works out for the first five years, then the zoning administrator is authorized to extend it for another five years. You, but that has to be baked in to the approval. And you have that in your code now, it's just rarely used. But I think it's better flows in, in the later section to 158. So, this standards for review, this is essentially consistent with your 17052, which is the general standards for special exceptions, which is all those high-level reviews that you have. So, that's, that's just moved around and it's there now. So, then procedures, how do we go about doing this? So, once deemed complete, and so, we're back to that same question, how long do we have to say that it is complete? And we definitely, we should manage expectations in that regard. And just some redundant language. So, right, no need to say, they need to make a recommendation within 90 days when the next section says failure of the commission to report within 90 days. It's already in there. This paragraph three, this is linked to state codes of for certain types of development, the Planning Commission must make and must determine whether there's consistency with the comp plan. So, just the code original thing. So, here's what was 17053, this long list of conditions that were included in the current ordinance of things that the Board could apply and their recommendation is get rid of all the specificity and just keep it general, which is where if you read Note eight, you'll see that. There you go. So, we talked about the renewals versus extensions and my recommendation is all that ends up a little bit lower in 17058. Last time, the Berkeley group said, hey, I don't know about this time limits on special exceptions, there's a lot of debate over that. And we said, we're doing it. So, it's in there. It's consistent with what we're doing now. There's actually a bill this year that, that talks about that, which is interesting. And so, here's 17058 and the, so this is just, let's clean up the whole conversation about renewal and extension, put it all together in this 17058. So, it's clear we have these two pathways where once you get to the end of your time limit, you have these two doors to pass through. It's either been preordained that it can be extended by the zoning administrator or you get to start over at the beginning and apply again. Revocation, which I think is 17060, 61 now. So, you had language before that restricted your ability to revoke a special exception in certain situations. And so, one, for example, is you can get a special exception for a sixth lot for a family subdivision. So, you can't really revoke that. The lot exists, you can't unmake the lot. And so, there were, there are some situations, you just can't revoke a use and you shouldn't revoke. So, if you have a special exception that allows somebody build some building, you, A, you're not going to put a time limit on it, on being able to build a building and say you have to take the building down in five years. So, it's kind of inherent, but it's a note that we might need to expand that thought a little bit further. There might be some things that you simply just can't revoke as a board, once you, once you authorize them. And they're probably vested, right, best they could. This. So, the, our current ordinance says these three alternatives. I think alternative one really is just what we need to more or less reference for every single one. And my note here was, I don't think the wording in this is very clear right now and it needs some work. Reconsideration, so most of these divisions do talk about, if you've applied and you were denied, you don't get to apply again for 12 months or some period of time. If it's withdrawn at a particular time, that's a different time bar. And so, each of those divisions have this section on reconsiderations and what happens if you withdraw or get denied or whatever, when can you apply again? And that's similar to what you have now, but it's broken up for each one. So, now the next division, variances. Similar language to what you.
Is that what we have right now? Somebody, if they're in the middle of a permitting process and they, and they want to withdraw to correct it or just kind of start over, do they have to wait six months? Is that what it is currently?
No, so, no. The only, I think all we have now is if you're denied, you don't get, come, get to come back for 12 months and there's nothing else. So, the question is, the big question is, so what happens if they've applied and we haven't even had the public hearing? You know, should you be able to withdraw then?
So, this is brand-new language, this six-month thing.
There is, so this green language is definitely new and so, it's something to think about.
Right, well, that's really interesting because we just came upon a situation where the owners of the Blue Rock wanted to withdraw because he didn't think that was going to fly. And if he has to wait six months, I'm not advocating for him, just saying that.
Yep.
I can see a situation even with a landowner where that would be a real burden to them.
Could be.
Because they just didn't understand and were going down the wrong path or something that said, hey, wait a minute, and now they have to wait six months.
Which is kind of a blink of the eye really, but. So, it totally, totally could be there or not. I don't feel strongly that it has to be there.
Was that really a withdrawal or was a modification?
Well, it was, it was, the applicant's attorney wanted to make clear that it was withdrawn so as to not be considered a denial. Because the denial is the thing that would have a, a 12-month limit on it.
Well, I just wouldn't want to, you know, really slow down anybody who's trying to get something done.
I, I, I agree with that, but at the same time, which you also don't want to encourage, and people have to pay a separate fee, which is.
Yeah, no.
A dampening measure. You also don't want to have somebody playing, I'm going to apply just to test things out.
Yeah.
Okay, that didn't work, then I'm going to apply next month.
No, no, I get that.
Then I'm going to apply next month.
But they do become for two sets of bodies and they do get feedback. And people do get really clear like, oh, this is not going to fly. Okay, I'll, how about this?
Yeah, so some, so, and then, you know, what is substantially the same. So, if they come in and they find out, oh, well, you're not going to allow in a barn with 400 people, they come back with one for 100 people, that's not the same application. So, so this is definitely something we should look and you should think about and, you know, talk to your constituents and citizens who, you know, can provide their input and we can perfect the language here before we get to a public hearing. Of what restrictions do you want, if any, for somebody who applies, but it's withdrawn? Interesting. And I didn't ask them to do that, so they, you know, they must have seen, have seen that in many other places in the state or something like that, suggested it.
Partial, it was a partial withdrawal, though, right?
Yeah, it was, so, so it was a withdrawal part of it. Yeah.
Is that a, I don't know. I, I think you can get into some real word.
Sure, sure can. So, the standards for review of, of variance are very specific. This is very consistent with what we have now. You know, variances are pretty narrowly construed and this is trying to set those expectations. And then, this is really linked to Code of Virginia 2309. When can the BCA actually approve the variance? All right, so site plans. Much different than the last time you saw it. And how, how and when the different types of site plans are required is much different than it was in the last version and much different than what we have now, which I find extremely confusing, what we, what we have now. I think it's safe to say in most localities, the process is maybe a rezoning happens or a special exception happens and that some level of site layout is provided by the applicant to convey their general concept of what they want, want to do. It's not engineered plans, right? It costs a lot of money. So, then maybe they're successful and they get their amendment zoning, rezoning, or they get their special exception and then they want to actually build the thing. Well, when it's time to build the thing, then they would have to do the engineered plans before they can get their zoning permit.
The sketch plan.
And the type, the, the level and intensity of that engineered plan or plan is based on the intensity of development and the impact to those around you. So, is, whether, you know, you disturbing much land, are you causing much traffic, which are really the two biggies. And the more of those things you're doing, the more intense type of plans you're going to have to do. So, if you, if you ever disturb more than 10,000 square feet, you have to do an erosion sediment control plan anyway. And that's kind of a minor site plan base level. And if you disturb more than an acre, then you have to do a stormwater management plan for DQ and that's kind of that next level up. And so, those are, are set up in this ordinance now as the kind of tiers that would definitely throw you into those categories. So, if you're doing a subdivision that disturbs over an acre, it's a major site plan. That's pretty much every, every subdivision's going to do that. If it's a common plan of development, has roads and stuff. But if you have one, a site that's maybe only a half acre in size, you would not trigger the stormwater management. But maybe it's a restaurant and it's going to have a ton of traffic because it has a drive-through or it's a gas station or something, that might trigger a major too because it has a lot of traffic. But if it's a site that is small, doesn't disturb more than an acre and doesn't have a lot of traffic, then maybe you don't need the highest level of site plan engineering required. That's the concept. And I think it can be perfected, but that's how it's laid out right now.
Yeah, my concern with that scenario is I wouldn't want the use intensity to be tied to the same things that are building disturbance because like your traffic example is a better example than.
Right, well, part of that is if you have to do an erosion sediment control plan, then you must have engineered scale drawings anyway. Okay? So, once you've passed that threshold and you have to do the engineered plans to show where your silk fence is and your ditches are and all that stuff, well, now you can show us where, where the other features are on that plan, a certain list of things.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm thinking about, we went through this with one of the facilities where it was just a reimagined use of all existing infrastructure. And we got to the point of saying, wait a minute, there's no trigger for a site plan here because they're not moving anything. And I think that was not an outcome we would really ideally want if they're really changing the use in some intent, even though they're not moving dirt.
Well, and so, maybe it is or maybe it isn't. And so, if this use is going from a, from an agricultural barn to an event center, then I would argue that your traffic trigger's going to, going to get you.
As long as there aren't these other triggers is what I.
And so, how it's written is important and what, and you know, how objective they are and what they are, those are important things that, that you definitely need to think about. So, this is that section that gets to it, applicability. And so, sketch plan is, and these are linked back to the other divisions. So, sketch plan is required for any development requiring building permit accordance with Chapter 71, zoning map amendments, special exceptions.
Where are these defined?
Next.
Okay.
Right, so, a minor site plan is required for development with land disturbance over 10,000 square feet, needing it, which you need an ENS plan and already have an engineered plan. Change in use where additional parking is required, which is kind of that, you know, somewhat of a proxy for that. And any development that would have substantial impact upon traffic in any connecting public road, and they put a parenthetical 10, which they say is a VDOT term. Whether we would need more clear definitions for ourselves or not, we need to think about that. And, and my note here is that earlier, we talked about conditional, a, a, a rezon, not conditional, rezoning with increased residential density would also require this minor site plan. So, if it's stated above, either it should be listed here instead of up there or somehow, let's be clear that that is also something that would trigger a minor site plan. So, then a major site plan, we're almost, we don't do these, we're going, aren't going to do these very often in Rappahannock, you know? Just, you know? But, yeah, to be prepared. So, they intend for the first category to be I, one and two, so it's exceeds 10,000 and you have a parking. So, if you trigger both of those, then you get to go to major. If you connect to public water and sewer, you're going to have to have engineered plans showing how the water and sewer is going to lay out. Public road sidewalks, fire hydrants, getting need to have that detail laid out. Any development that would have substantial impact on traffic. And then, my comment was, you ought to have the stormwater threshold in here too, which is once you exceed one acre disturbance. So, then there's, you know, there probably should be some flexibility built in here. As you, as we look down at what sort of things are required for the different levels of site plan, maybe they're not all appropriate for every situation, depending on what's going on on that parcel. So, there's, there is flexibility now and there should be flex, flexibility in the future, both requiring more and requiring less.
Do you want to give the zoning administrator the ability to tell the applicant that drawing topography lines under.
Right, do we, do we really need five-foot contour lines for a flat parcel that is?
Well, I think the whole point is sketch panels anyways.
Is to make it simpler.
You need an engineer to do that.
Yeah, we don't want it, we don't.
Maybe some lines pointing downhill.
I want a scaled parcel layout, show me where your building is. So, we have a general idea of what's going on. We don't want you to have to hire a $20,000 engineer at this point in time. Now, once you, once you develop your, your thing and have to have a VDOT entrance and all this other stuff, well, yeah, then you're going to have to do it. But you don't have to do it wondering whether you're even going to be allowed to do this use at all anyway, because you have to go through public hearings.
Just to be clear, though, the sketch has the same enforceability to it. You're not, it's not conceptual, it's that you can, well, that was just a sketch, now I want to do it this way.
Well, so that would be subject to, if it's needed for a special exception, then, then a condition might be you develop in the, you know, conformance with your sketch plan, a reasonable conformance with your sketch plan, right? And so, that sketch plan is laid out now as, and I'm just suggesting wording change to mirror these other sections. Property lines, abutting streets and route numbers, general location of existing proposed buildings, uses, parking, loading, landscaping, fencing, signs, trash enclosures, any highway entrance and driveways, topography shown by contour lines with the contour interval not more than five feet. Do you need that? Do you not need that? Having the opportunity to waive it is valuable, but if you had a super steep parcel, then maybe five-foot contours wouldn't be too bad. And oh, by the way, you can pull those off the flood map.
This is real nitpicky, but I would prefer approximate over general because again, to this point that you're, if you're not, you're not getting more hypothetical, you're just getting more precise as you, as you move up the threshold.
I think that's reasonable to say. So, additional information is deemed reasonable. So, minor site plan, now you're thinking about actual like engineered drawings. So, more structure, place for approval, you know, which way is north? All the zoning information, two-foot contours, have existing easements and rights of way, floodplain limits. So, not to say that floodplain is not going to be important for a sketch plan and that might be some information that the zoning administrator, floodplain administrator shares later or requires to be placed on that for the body's consideration as a, a general amendment, map amendment or a special exception.
If they're altered, when is the process, when those altered requirements come into play?
Probably at the time of application and, you know. Probably at the time of application and, you know, during the completeness review.
That's, that's clear from.
I, maybe not. So maybe that's an area that needs to be considered.
Something to think about. Seems like you're.
So right now, these, for any use that is allowed by right, the zoning administrator can decide certain things aren't needed in a site plan or site plan is not needed at all. For things that are, go through SE, that authority is given to the planning commission. So the question, certainly if it's today, if the authority is given to the planning commission, that can't possibly happen until the planning commission sees it, which is really far into the process.
Yeah.
So we would want it earlier if we can.
We have to bury the procedure with the authority.
Yeah, but the body should ultimately always be able to request more information and have the authority to request more information for a site specific situation where the, you know, the, the base level of a sketch plan is you need one or two more things, maybe off the minor list because of that unique circumstance and you should have the authority to ask for that. But I agree, the timing should be carefully identified. When, when can that happen? Because an applicant should have the expectation that it's not just always open ended and you can always ask for more stuff. It seems like that happens. So, you know, what is included on the minor list versus the major list? That's important. And what I said at the very beginning of this is that we're getting closer, but I still think we need to spend some time, hear from the public, hear from people who have applied, maybe even the engineering community of what, what would be appropriate to include in these different categories. Even, you know, consider what other people do. I mentioned before Stafford has a, you know, this sec, minor, major, and I haven't compared them side by side. So I don't know if there's a value in looking at all the specifics other than to say, this is a task that still needs to be done to really carefully consider what is it that you want to require in this hierarchical drawing set that you would require to either decide whether a permit is acceptable or once it's deemed to be acceptable, authorize them to move forward administratively to show that they have met the zoning requirements, have met VDOT requirements, have met health department requirements, which are all, once you check the box, you can do it. You just have to show that you've actually met those requirements.
So it strikes me that up until this point, you've been sort of flying along quite comfortable with what you've been saying and you just crossed into a space where you're like, yeah, this still needs work. Am I hearing that correctly?
Yes, yeah, we're getting closer, but we're not there yet.
So, so might we talk about, I, I, my suggestion would be that we get to the place where you feel comfortable that you've done, you've got something that you would stand behind and, and then we maybe do a work session to, to walk through it. Because I think we're now getting to the point, even if it weren't, you know, 9:30, that it's, it's a little harder to.
Sure. Yeah, I don't, I wouldn't expect you to fare that out tonight. And I think if you want staff to take a shot at what we really think or iteratively with Berkeley Group and bring back that next to you, that's, I think that's reasonable.
That's what feels like right to me.
Happy to do that. See if there's anything else major in here. We talked before about fees. I wasn't aware, but you know, code of Virginia says we're supposed to adopt fees, boards adopts our fees by ordinance. We haven't done that, so we should do that. And then it just says in here that we're going to, we should say we're going to do it here. It says resolution because that's where our current code says. But the code of Virginia says ordinance, which is not unreasonable. You have to have a public hearing and get the public's input on whether your fees are So the review process for the different types of plans, who gets to review them, who has the authority? So this suggests that, you know, major site plans definitely has to go to the planning commission, similar to the site plan today, the full, full fledged site plan today, that's planning commission. And the idea is that minor and sketch plans would not have to go through that gauntlet, but it can. In my last community, major site plans didn't go to the planning commission. It was, it's a ministerial, it's, it's a poster. You check the boxes, you get to do it. Follow the engineering requirements, you get to do it. You don't have to do that in a public process because the requirements should be laid out. Do you have an erosion sediment control? Do you have your public utilities? Do you meet your minimum yards and your trees and all that stuff? And if you're a lot, if you've done all those things and they're consistent with each other and the trees aren't on top of the utilities in the middle of the entrance, then you're fine.
That makes me as more appropriate to a building type environment.
And so for a minor thing, I think maybe that's okay. Once you get to a major, that's getting to be much bigger public interest thing. So the, the ordinance could require both to go to the planning commission. Many localities do that. And we don't do many of these, so it's not that big of a deal. Amendments to site plans, period of validity, state code says that these things are valid for five years. Our current code says 12 months. It's not valid anyway. And then here recently, the state has seen fit to just keep extending the validity of these for various reasons, the pandemic, the downturn, the whatever, the state just keeps saying, just keep extending it, keep extending it, keep extending. So there, it seems like there are bills every year that do that. This came into play for the, the Scrabble cell tower where they've got that approval that would have expired, but the state put the provision in saying if you had a special exception and, and you haven't been able to do it because of the pandemic, it's still valid. And they'll, they'll probably redo that this year too, which is fine for a while.
So what's the difference between the site plan validity and the overall application validity?
Once, just state code for, once you get to a point where if a use is by right or they received a special exception or, or whatever that allows them to do this particular use on this particular parcel and they've gone through the effort and the engineering drawing to have their development plan or site plan, as we call it, then the state says that's valid for five years.
Okay.
And so I think either state's probably thinking, somebody's put a lot of money into the development of this parcel. They may have paid 50, 50 grand, who knows? Maybe it's a, you know, like a Walmart, right? They've put a hundred thousand dollars into this and that needs to have some lasting power and not just be run out in six months.
So other parts are run out in six months.
Yeah, so just the typical zoning permit, it's six months.
Yeah.
Yeah. If, and special exceptions have a shorter period of time. If you don't make any action towards it, then it's gone. But if you go through this engineering process, which is one of the problems of saying everybody's got to do a site plan, you kind of almost vest them for those five years. So we talked before, this division eight is a kind of a new separate section talking about temporary zoning permits. The only things we have in our current ordinance now is this idea that you can have a mobile home if you have a building permit. And we talked before, not many people actually have a mobile home during their building permit to build their house, but a lot of people want to have travel trailers after the house burns to have the travel trailer next to the house to live in it while they're rebuilding their house. And so we probably ought to allow that. And I've talked before about some previous determinations that were made on the definitions of travel trailer and mobile homes. And if we're going to allow it, we should allow it here, but be clear, you're only allowed to do this in very limited circumstances when you have a building permit for the primary house on that parcel. And there could be some other temporary permits that you might want to include in there. If you ever want to, if you want to, we could, we could package things in there like uses, field parties and things like that, they're temporary, right? It's not a permanent use of a parcel. You could potentially have a different category of allowing an event permit that's just a one-off sort of thing and a process for that that could go into these temporary permits.
What about other kind of like emergency situations with those applied here or do they have another place?
Yeah, so the way this, the same similar provision came up in my last community was, you know, after the repetitive flooding and people, you know, decide they're going to rebuild in the same place over and over again and get flooded over and over again, they would be able to have an alternate place to live while they're gutting their house and getting it ready to go again, using their flood insurance. So here, unfortunately, we don't really have that too much. But fires or things like that, act, you know, windstorm, tornado, whatever, is the idea.
No longer than one year, sometimes it takes two to build a house. So is that, the zoning administrator has the time or has the ability to extend it?
I don't think it's written right now. It's not to exceed that one calendar year from the date of final access, what it used to say. It was reworded to try to make it clearer. If the body wanted to allow greater flexibility, there's probably a way to do that. But at the same time, we really don't want people living in travel trailers for a long period of time. They're just not as safe as a regular home. And some people will, yeah, well, I'm working on my house, you know, one brick at a time.
Anybody coming out to inspect or whatever would know at what stage the house was.
Yeah, you know, if, if they can satisfy the threshold of having an active building permit, that's a pretty good threshold. And there are reasons why sometimes that's a problem. And if you don't keep, your building permit is only valid for six months unless it's extended to a year. So you could be more flexible, could say that it could be extended by the zoning administrator or the planning commission or whatever. But I do think having a, a clear, limited period sets the expectation that this is not a forever thing.
Right.
It's not even a really long time thing. It's a, it's a limited allowable use now. Well, it does talk us about temporary for mobile homes. Quite frankly, in Virginia, if you're in agricultural zoning, you're allowed to have a mobile home period, right? We might imply that you can only have one during certain times, but you're allowed to just have it. You can't have two of them because we can control how many you can have on a parcel. And we have so much ag zone property, that's really the default. So you talked about interpretations. So here, I was telling you later, I thought that there was a section, so the zoning determinations section, I think is probably more specifically going to your question earlier, Mr. Carney, about these and what notices provided. And I think I did add this note here that this section probably should reference 15-22286A4, which says that, that minimum storage capacity and yield requirements as well. So if you wanted to include some sort of mandated something, right? I don't know, however, disclosure, listing, report to the planning commission, something of official determinations, this would be a place to do it, I think.
But in Article one, that section 170 dash 07 was interpretation.
That's interpretations. I think you probably don't want to go there for interpretations, but you do. That's just every day, someone's got to look and parse the definition. If there's no definition in the zoning orange, you got to look at the definition in the dictionary. And I think that's probably that where, as opposed to, this is the, the big scenario we talked about earlier.
Yeah, yeah.
Those things happen, you know, all the time.
Yeah, yeah, totally. Yep.
These are the things that could potentially make big changes, which is, is not talked about in our ordinance right now. It's enabled by state code, it's just not talked about in our, so this sets it out in our local code. And it also does set out, and I said we should, we could have an application, it's, it's in here. So how would one actually ask for official determination? So this would make, if you have a process, then it would clarify that somebody just bumping into the zoning administrator on the street saying, you know, what do you think about this? That's not a determination. And what do you think about this hypothetical? That's not a determination. So it has to have the specificity and be linked to a tax map, et cetera.
And you're saying that this now mirrors the state code instead?
It is enabled by state code. We don't have anything now, so state.
The green, this right here now.
Yeah, the state doesn't require these things.
Right, right, right. But it enables us to do it.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
So it just says that we, that the administrator can make determinations.
So the 90 days just was whose?
Yeah, I guess their idea, right? So are different things appropriate? Probably. Oh, no, the 90 days is actual, that's state code.
Okay.
Sorry.
Gotcha.
Not all these things are prescribed in state code, but 90 days is prescribed in state code.
Okay.
And that's if, if somebody asks for a determination formally, then you do have to respond to 90 days. So it's trying to give some standardization to that. But this would be the place. Appeals, mostly statutory. And all those different divisions referred to Division 11, public hearings, which are, we have those sections now, so it's mostly just moved around to here. And mostly just leaning on what we do now is 15-2224. There was a question before making clear that when joint public hearings were, could happen in what scenarios, so just lays it out a little more clearly. We talked a little bit about 17091. I think this can still be tweaked a little bit. When they wrote it the first time, they wrote it from the perspective of some localities require the applicant to post the sign that they pick up from the county. Sometimes they have to pay for the sign, whereas what we do is that the administrator posts the sign. So it changes it a little bit and it's a little less prescriptive. But once this is written in here, we have to do this for sure. So we want to hold ourselves accountable. Right now, it's not required, but we've been doing it as a practice and there was a practice in the past and a gap when it wasn't happening. Saying it shall be removed no more than seven days. I'm like, what is, what's, or what? We write that in there, so it's not like they get the permit or don't get the permit if the sign didn't come out after seven days, but I guess it's not unreasonable to have some direction in there to, to the zoning administrator. And D is supposed to, you know, somebody goes out there and monkeys with a sign, it doesn't make the, the process invalid. But arguably could make the process invalid if we never put the sign up at all. We need to think about, do we really want that threshold to be in there? If we do, that's fine, but we have to follow it.
And then ground take picture of it.
That's what we do. And, you know, and then does it 15 days prior, is 15 days the right number? I started to think about whether that was the right number. Our current practice has been to put them up when the ad would show up in the newspaper.
Yep.
Let the ad shows up in the newspaper, not always a fixed number of days ahead because of our weekly newspaper and the date, the public hearing and so.
More times better than less.
Yeah, and so having a fixed number of days is probably the easiest way to do it here. And most of the times it would probably be done in the same time the ad is put in the So 17092, after, after all these notification requirements, we do something wrong, but you show up and come, well, then it doesn't really matter because you're here. Right? But if you don't show up and we didn't do the things, then. And then just another note, when they codify this, they built in reserve sections throughout the, the entire organization at the end of articles. And that helps us when we're modifying the ordinance in the future, so we don't have to have like 170, 108 dot one dot, 108 dot two, 108 dot three, which is what we do now. When we run out of numbers, we have to start inserting those, section 108 dot something. So we just build in some capacity for the future, which means the totally recodified section goes up to like section 200 or something now. Nine didn't have any other updated comments either. That was all about nonconformities, which is all about things that happened before the ordinance was changed, which is important. A lot of revised text in here. That is an awful lot of stuff. And just as I keep saying, this is iterative process. I don't think anybody's pushing to get things done in a particular timeframe, other than we just want to keep some forward momentum so that we can keep refining it to a point where we eventually get comfortable that it's time to formally put it to the public for a formal public hearing. And that's probably after more of informal public hearings, if you will. Do you have anything else that want to talk about this? And the Berkeley Group is probably pushing harder than anybody, but they'll do whatever we say because they work for us. Do want to touch on real quick, the. Do want to touch on real quick the the list of things that have been referred to the planning commission by the board. The board, the planning commission hits on these during each one year meetings. I just want to identify that there are several things hanging out there right now. Largest of which is the sign ordinance. And as we I said earlier, I keep saying this, who can do what where? That's all about sign ordinance, right? We also have the Reed versus Gilbert and enforceability. That's a big hole, so at some point we got to circle back around to that. Have you got this referred professional offices by right in the highway corridor zone, which they aren't allowed now, and there was a discussion, maybe they should be allowed for whether you have more or less than three people that's simply putting a P into that use matrix at some point in time. That's still hanging out there. Family subdivisions, there there is a question of whether there should be options for increased capacity. So if remember right now, you can do five of those right now and don't have to pay attention to the density and you don't have to pay attention to the road rules, and you can do five. And if you come in for a special exception, you can get your six. Maybe those numbers should be bigger if you want to have greater capacity. That was referred on. The whole continuum of events and venues in general with different types. And then events by nonprofits, like, you know, do you just get to do as many events by for nonprofits at your parcel alongs or different nonprofits? Do you want to put more regulation around that? The vehicle access to events, the board referred that to the public safety committee who chewed on it at a couple of meetings, and they keep continue to chew on it, and it might eventually circle back to the planning commission and and the board. And I would suggest to both bodies that all of these things which really fall into, except for the procedural side of the ordinance of the sign ordinance, the who can do what where, you guys bin those up and say that's phase two for the Berkeley group or something. Along with implementation of some of those comp plan things you wanted to talk about, like telecommunication towers and lining those better with what's in the state code and maybe tweaking the solar stuff, which you guys said you might want to look at again. Those all go into a future phase of Berkeley group and let the Berkeley group guide the remaining process rather than try to start digging into any of these while you're also working on phase one. I think it just makes sense to hold off, even though I'd love to have the sign ordinance done and behind us, particularly before November gets here. But you know, I think it is what it is. You can only do so much. Just the realization, so I'm sorry.
Question about the sign ordinance. As far as I, my recollection is the sign ordinance is still with the board supervisors. It is not referred back to the planning commission.
Yes, I think, well, I think you're right. The planning commission said that you've done all you can do about this, but it's still not done. And it can't go anywhere forward. I think the board has identified that the version that's moved to them is not the version that they want to adopt. And so that means there will have to be another version, another public hearing at the planning commission and board. So it's on your table somewhere for a public hearing. How it gets there and what form it's in is a question mark right now. And my recommendation is, you know, we just throw that on Berkeley group's table along with everything else to tweak what you've already done. Because we we took a swing at it, and there's still more work to be done, and there's a lot of good input from the public.
I don't think it would be fair to refer it to the Berkeley group without some direction about what's currently in its satisfaction.
I think we've gotten a ton of input from the public, but absolutely, if the planning commissioner or board have concrete information on what got, you know, guidance to get it over the finish line or at least to the red zone. Mixing my metaphors as Miss Smith likes, then then that'd be great.
Yeah, I mean, I think that has to come from the board because the planning commission pursued the work at the direction of the board, and it was a vote of the board that took it out of the planning commission and to the board level, at which point it was not adopted. So I I think the direction really needs to come from the board.
Yeah, I I agree with you. That's my recollection is that that's where we landed too, and that we needed to wrestle with it before. And yeah, it was, that's what we were going to do. I agree.
Yeah, so I would just say let's maybe not do that while we're doing phase one unless you really, really want to. Phase of this Berkeley group stuff, right? If you really want to do both, then we'll try to help you do that. Just let us know.
So are you suggesting that the phase one would be taken all the way to passage before going to those items?
A long way towards it, yeah. I mean, I think in, I think in final form in either at public hearing stage before you start digging into it, I think it makes a lot of sense. You have a lot of different variables happening side by side, and now you're advertising this whole ordinance that includes the current sign ordinance for adoption with a recodified way and new articles. And you're doing that while you're also trying to change it at the same time. It gets way confusing. It's even confusing right now as we're trying to change these couple of things, right?
Yeah, I think the idea of clean brakes is helpful to everyone.
Yeah.
Assuming they're clean.
So I just want to say there is a bunch of stuff still hanging out there, but a lot of it's small. Yeah, you guys have made great progress so far, and there's that you have paid professionals to continue guiding this process to hopefully get something that you feel comfortable with, and the public has had a lot of time to provide input on. And ultimately, you get to a public hearing and everybody tells you how wonderful it is, and then then you adopt it.
Well, I I would thank you for that whirlwind tour. That was slightly painful, but also very effective. So thank you. Obviously a lot of work.
It's it's all on board, Doc. So, you know, in your spare time, you can review it, public can review it more, provide input. Keep whittling away at refining the information.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
That's all I have. You do have a roundtable discussion on your agenda for the planning commission, if there's anything left to discuss.
Anybody care to raise any additional issues?
Doesn't matter. You can.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Oh, board.
Board, sorry, board.
A second.
All right, motion of second, any discussion, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn?
Is that a yes? Yes, okay.